Good evening, everyone. I am going to call to order the Concord Carla Regional School Committee.
And I'll call to order the Concord School Committee.
And we are going to start out with our CCHS update. I think we see, I see Harry and Zaria. Felicity on?
Unfortunately, we don't have Felicity tonight. She had a commitment for the play. But sorry, and I still have a quick update for you guys. Just give me one second to get it up. Okay, perfect. So first of all, we mentioned this last week, but college visits are continuing at the high school during the flex box. I have yet to go to one, but a lot of my friends who have said it's been a really great chance to like, talk to the admissions counselor in person rather than just like looking at the website. And again, it's a good use of the flex box. And then also guidance counselors have been meeting with seniors during flex box as a group for like, things that everyone has to do and then also individually just to check in. I know it's been a lot of college stuff for me lately. That's kind of obviously what's on the seniors minds.
Um, this Friday on October thirteenth, students are going to be taking the PSATs. The informational meeting that took place last week was really helpful to get us all set up before the actual PSAT takes place. And I know a lot of us are ready to take on the PSAT. So, yeah.
Yeah. And then also this Friday is the Green Team's annual Bike to School Day, which is a really great opportunity and also of course getting community service hours for it kind of incentivizes people. And then also the applications for this year's MVP or Mentors and Violence Prevention Training have opened. That's something that happens every year. It's open to sophomores through seniors and it's also a really great opportunity.
Um, the school's production of Clube begins Thursday, October 26th, which is in two weeks. Um, I know Felicity couldn't be here to give you the update, but I know she, she would probably say that the production is really good so far and we should all go watch it.
You can all go watch it.
Next week, we have our first like full on half day where we get, where we get released at 11:15. And I know a lot of students are excited to get a break from school and, you know, do stuff together. Have fun.
Yeah. Thank you. That's all we had this week.
You guys, that's enough. Well, good luck. Uh, good luck to you, Harry, as you're probably, you know, in senior year and working on some things. We won't even mention what you're working on, but good luck to you next few weeks.
Thank you.
I actually too, I've, a lot of parents have been talking about the positive response they've felt with college visits coming during flex box. And I've been asked by several people if, that was new or, if it was something that had gone away during COVID. So, I know you guys probably like it because it makes things more convenient for you, but it's gotten a really positive parent response as well.
Yeah, no, we couldn't agree more. It had waned through COVID then in trying to bring it back. We were back into the lunch, trying to squeeze it into lunches when kids aren't all free. And it's just such a great example of the benefit of a flex block where everybody's free and you can just know where to plug them in and, put the options out for the kids to register. So.
Yeah.
And they've been really well publicized on social media.
Very well publicized. I think that's how parents know about it. And it's, it's, it's been interesting to see too, conceptualizing the flex blocks for me was not, it was easy, but, but now seeing how they're coming into fruition, the more and more I see the diversity of what, kids are doing there. I think it's very positive.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Right, sure. Well, thank you so much and feel free to stay or go. We always love having you. So it's really up to you. Thank you.
Can I ask a quick comment about just they brought up the half day? And maybe I was asleep or wasn't here. The, the early release. What was the impetus for that? And if, has there been any, I just know like, right, there's no lunch and they get out at 1:15. Has anybody?
The, the early release that we've had has been at 1:15 and the one that's coming next week is at 11:15. So I think the classes are also going to be shorter.
No, but so on the early release day, like, cause I have a kid that of course doesn't eat breakfast and then I'm like, oh, and you're not eating until 1:15 like.
Yeah, they have two snack breaks.
Okay.
Built in and things are available and, um, open to buy. So there's definite opportunity to nourish throughout the morning. So hopefully we, I think the kids know that we'll continue to put, make sure that they do.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great. All right. We will move on to public comments. So just as a reminder, our public comment period is a period of 20 minutes. And this is a meeting in the public, not with the public. So we will not be responding to public comments. So if you have a public comment and you're in the room, you may join us at the table and please state your name and address and then we will go to Zoom.
Going to pass this out by the handout. Uh, good evening, Dean Banfield, 73 Walden Terrace and the Chair of the Solar Implementation Task Force or the STF. The STF began meeting in August with a primary objective of planning for the fulfillment of a target in the Climate Action Plan, citing 20 megawatts of solar production on town owned land. We are about 12 megawatts from that goal right now, and we're working to reach it by 2030. A secondary priority of the task force is to identify and begin implementation of one or two sites as quickly as possible, to demonstrate Concord's continued commitment to this solar goal. To meet this secondary objective, the task force must move quickly because legislative actions via town meeting, if necessary, only come around once a year and December, the month in which the warrant will be open, is coming up very soon. The Campus Advisory Report looked at solar, but was under the mistaken impression that the CMLP grid could not support it without upgrades. This is not the case. The table you have in front of you shows multiple opportunities on the CCHS campus. As a near term project, the STF would like to pursue the area listed in green as the CCHS drainage catchment area. It would be a ground mount system, the least expensive type and the most straightforward to design and build. We anticipate that this would be done at no cost to the district with CMLP managing the project similarly to the CMS system, uh, that has already been designed. What we need from the school committee are two things. A, the authorization for the light plant to construct the project in the designated area and B, a firm commitment to the specific area within the target zone. That will allow us to do cost and energy production calculations as well as preliminary design work. We would need these commitments by the conclusion of your scheduled November 7th meeting. This would allow for a school committee discussion at the October 24th meeting and a final decision by the 7th. Anything drifting beyond this date makes it challenging to meet the warrant deadline. I would be happy to join your meeting on the 24th to answer any questions you may have about this potential project. Thank you for your attention in this matter.
Thank you.
Yes. I'm going to make a bold assumption that you are older than me and I cannot read this. So you sent this document, you sent the front thing. Did you send the back end too? To attach, marvelous. I can find it. Thank you.
All right. And now I will go to Zoom. And if you have a public comment on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature. I do not see any. And if we have any more public comment in the room, you can fill out a form. Oh, we have one coming in.
Hi, Brian Crowns, 49 Indian Pipe Lane in Concord. Apologize, I'm out of context having just rushed here from work. I just saw that the track was listed on the agenda tonight and I just wanted to come and speak in favor of, having a track at the high school and having the whole track team be able to, work out, practice and compete together, the, the, the track events and the build events and also be, it's a great community asset. Um, I use the track in Emerson a lot, lots of walkers, lots of utility of the track itself and of the space inside the track, which could be any number of things at the high school. So I just wanted to speak in favor of that. Thank you.
Did you state your address?
Yep, 49 Indian Pipe Lane.
Thank you. Okay, we have it twice. All right. And any more public comment?
Court. A little bit out of order perhaps, uh, but I'm curious if someone, maybe Mr. Banfield could, uh, direct us to where, anyone could do additional homework on this, uh, his statement.
So maybe if we could just ask us to send that via email.
Thank you.
If you have any additional information, if you'd sent us via email.
It's already in your mailboxes. Is there some kind of public document you need so they do distribute it to the public?
No, we have it. We have, whatever you said to us will go from there.
I can, that, that's a two page P D F. I can sort of that.
Is that what you're looking for, Court?
Yeah. Also, uh, would we go to the, the town department website or?
CMLP.
Residing somewhere.
So without, um, having a discussion with Mr. Banfield in public.
That's my only question.
Yes, I was looking for some.
If there's supplemental material that he would expect us to know about.
So I actually asked Lori to reach out to CMLP, which she has. So we will be sending some more information as we have it. But I was looking for additional information to find out, I guess I'll just say it publicly, to find out, how we can find out that CMLP is able to accept solar from the grid. And I couldn't find that on the town website. If there is a meeting or something else, I would love for someone to forward that information to us.
So we're on the same wavelength as to the homework we're considering. Good. Thank you. Thank you.
Right. Any other public comments either in Zoom or in the room? No, I do not see any. So we will move on tonight to our recognitions. And tonight is a big night for Kicks for Cancer. Um, and I think that most of you know that we had a huge Kicks for Cancer weekend a couple of weekends ago. I think we had some students with us online. And I will give it to Dr. Hunter to just kind of give us a quick recap of Kicks for Cancer.
Thank you. And I think what I'm going to do is just read off the names. The kids, all really wanted to be here. And of course, some of them are actually on the soccer field and things like that are drawing them away. So I'm just going to read all the names. If you're here, turn on your Zoom camera, come on up to the table. All right. When I call your name. Uh, so, and these were student leaders that I asked the combination to the student government and, Kicks leadership to identify. So we know it was a huge number of students engaged. These are particular student leaders. So for band, Theo Collins, Key Club, Alyssa Bono, Boys Soccer, Doug Fortier and Sean Trudeau, Girls Soccer, Caroline Coletti and Natalie Gahan, Class Government, Faith Clark and Field Hockey, Hadley Swenson.
Perfect. You can take a seat. And I do think that Boys and Girls Soccer, they are both playing today.
They're at LS.
Girls are away and boys are home.
Yeah, they're playing at six. So that just totally didn't work out, but it's okay. They're very excited to have been asked and we'd love to hear more from the kids that are here. And I have a little bit from Alyssa. So maybe you can decide who to talk to.
So why don't we hear from Theo first? Cause Theo's right in front of us and maybe tell us about what your role was in Kicks for Cancer and, what you kind of got out of that.
Sure. So this year I organized a, uh, Picks for Cancer, uh, in which we brought live music, or aimed to bring live music, uh, to the Kicks for Cancer Weekend. Unfortunately, it was rained out.
Yeah.
But, uh, I learned a lot in the planning and, uh, we are already planning to do it next year, which I'm really excited about. And, uh, I, I've always felt that, uh, Kicks for Cancer was really a, a community for sports and people who are interested in sports. And, uh, this year I aim to bring, uh, more of a, even, even a wider community of people into the, such a wonderful event. And what I found was that everybody was, really excited to welcome new people and, just so open to new ideas. And it was really awesome. So I'm excited for next year.
Can you talk, did you play live music on that Friday too, during the school day?
Um, we played, live music the weekend before at a, uh, pop up merch sale, I believe.
Oh, right.
Oh, that's great. Yep.
Yeah.
That's great. Well, the mu, I, I do think I would agree. Like it's been great to really embrace the music department too and all of this. And so you had a live, you were supposed to have a live band at the event, right?
I actually had, I had 10 bands lined up, 10 student bands. Yeah.
Can you tell us a little bit about like those bands? Were they, um, student bands, all student bands, faculty bands?
Yeah. So all, all of those ten bands were student bands. Uh, a lot of them were centered around our Reverb Club for live music. Um, so we'll do shows in the cafeteria or the Black Box Theater during the school day. Last year we had, uh, our first IQH Fest after COVID. So I just contacted all of the bands and, uh, kids who are interested in this scene and, uh, extended the invitation.
That's great.
That's great. Well, thank you for that. It's great.
Thank you all for inviting me.
Yeah, thanks for coming. Thank you. And Faith is on Zoom.
Faith is on Zoom.
Okay, yes, I'm actually sitting in my car right now. Um, so I'm Clark. Um, I am the senior class president in government. So then one of our roles that we played for, not played, that we partaked in for the kicks weekend was the annual pink dance, which is a squad, like just pink out dance. And then all the proceeds go to the Kicks for Cancer Foundation.
And the dance this year, it was, it was the same, it was at the same time as the football game, right?
Yeah, it was, there was an away football game, I think against Wall fam. Same night, same time. So there's just a little miscommunication, but.
But it will continue on, the tradition will continue on next year.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's great. A little something for everybody.
We are talking about that conflict.
Yeah.
Try to figure out how to avoid that. So it's not as easy as it sounds because it's.
In my area.
Yeah, DCL play and all of that, but we're, we're working on that. So. Uh, and then I just wanted to share Alyssa sent me a nice note here when she realized she wouldn't be able to attend. She is part of the Key Club. Um, and so I'm going to just read what she sent. Uh, the Key Club contributed. It's a student led international organization that learns leadership through organizing service. It's the second year of being a chartered club through Key Club International and CCHS. So far, we have raised money for Camp Sunshine Clear Path for veterans and cancer research through gift baskets, bake sales, Valentine's Day bags and more. We've completed numerous hours of community service locally in all over Massachusetts. We have had a campus cleanup, Healing Gardens and Harvard Mass cleanup, gaining grounds harvesting event this past Saturday and worked with Open Table. We are an extremely active club with a full set of officers and lots of members. Our contribution to Kicks for Cancer was to design and sell keys for cancer lanyards, which she sent me a photo of. Awesome. And sell them. We found walking down the fan section of each game to sell helped us make more connections and raise $600. Attached is a picture. We're hoping to make this an annual contribution to Kicks. So I love the, um, perspectives that it's not just athletics. There's so many other ways kids get, um, engaged and involved. And of course the athletics we're thrilled about, but it's, it's bigger than that. And I think just a little sample of what some of those ways to contribute are.
So there are a lot of student volunteers there too. I, I worked with a student volunteer that was basically running the parking lot and she's a junior at CCHS. And she was the assistant director. I, I know Savina Rich Sibley who ran the parking lot and he does an amazing job. But she really took over the parking lot and it was wonderful. And she stayed all day. So there are volunteer opportunities. Send her up.
And then, you know, Green Team, they had volunteers there helping to make sure the sustainable efforts were going well with people composting, like the kids had so many ways to engage. It's something we should try to capture more.
Definitely, definitely. It was a great community event. There were two stories. We did get some press coverage off of that. So look for WBZ and WCVB both did stories. So it's a great event.
Um, offhand, how much in total was raised? Okay.
I have not heard this year's collection so far. I'm sure they're still.
They're not, I don't think they're done. And I think that there was such a run on the pink sweatshirts that they have to order more. So they're still selling. So I think they're not totally complete yet.
Yeah, it often takes until November to start to hear numbers. So, yeah, it'll be exciting.
Congrats. It's a huge.
Yeah, thank you.
Success.
Faith, thank you so much.
Thanks, Faith.
Thank you.
You're welcome to stay, but you don't have.
Feel free to go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Well done.
All right. So moving on to our consent agenda, I'm actually going to pull warrants off of it because we don't have warrant amounts on there. So that will get pushed to our next agenda. Would anyone like to pull anything else off of our consent agenda? So I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move, uh, second, and this is for item A.
Item A, any further discussion? All right. All in favor?
Hi.
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 Correspondence. I'm going to let you start with CPS first.
We had three pieces of correspondence at Concord Public Schools, two of which actually were focused on, um, high school issues, but, um, we had one about, uh, bus monitoring on the Metco bus. We had one about, uh, correspondence going out over the weekend from the vice principals to students at, or sorry, co-principals. To students at the high school and, um, a third one about, I wrote it down. Oh, uh, oh, about, um, supporting the use of, uh, facilities building, uh, for bathrooms at the high school.
And those two pieces of regional up forward to both you, Carrie and Sharon, because they were for the region, but they came in to Concord.
Sorry, we didn't realize.
And then, and those came in.
Today.
Today. Okay. And so at the region, we had one, two, three, four pieces of correspondence. Two were regarding the cell tower. One was regarding embedded level to English at CCHS. And the last was on solar at the CCHS campus. So you all should have received that. And I think that's all I have. Right?
That's it.
All right. Um, Superintendent's Chairs and Liaisons update. We did not get to our Liaisons update. So if you have something pressing on a committee that you sit on, we would love to hear from you just very briefly, um, if there's anything pertinent from the last month or now.
So I did not go, but we got an update about the Finance Committee. Was anybody there? The Finance Committee.
Oh, um, I think, what about it?
Well, we got a, uh, an email from.
Oh, yeah. So, um, they have finalized their schedule. Um, everyone on here should have received that. So we will have, a series of meetings coming up with them. They're, they're, they're pretty frequent from now through the end of the year. We have the specifics of what they're looking for. There's a little bit of, difference and nuance in what they're looking for this year. So we're, we're, we're changing a little bit the process, um, for our capital planning. And that, that was the sort of biggest takeaway. Other than that, it's the status, sort of the status quo. Uh, Dr. Hunter and Mr. Conry are prepared for those and gathering, um, up information for those data requests now.
Will we see that in the workshop portion?
So, um, we will have a budget centric meeting, on the 14th of November, um, which is two days in advance of the.
October.
October.
Sorry.
Two weeks from today.
Yep, sorry. We'll see. Yes, sorry. The 24th for the 26th. Yeah, we will see that all in advance. Every time, we, we, I think Carrie and Lori intentionally set, those budget centric meetings so that we will always have a preview before the Finance Committee meetings where we'll also be discussing, some of that data in public. That was, I think, all intentional.
About the five years, I will send them to the chairs.
Sorry?
I have some questions about the five year projections that I'll.
Sure.
To the chairs.
Did you send them?
No, I will.
Oh, okay. I'm like, wait, I didn't, I missed that. Okay.
I will.
Great.
Great. Right. Anyone else? Carrie, you had, did you have CPAC?
Yeah, just a quick CPAC update. Um, the CPAC has had two meetings, um, this month, the first of which was a full, um, committee group meeting, um, where Angel kind of introduced herself to the community, gave, gave an overview of all of her goals. I think that presentation was shared with everybody. She did a great job. And then the second meeting was last week where it was just a board meeting. Um, they talked a little bit about, literacy. They talked about, um, one of their key goals for this year is to grow their community. And so they are, looking for help from the administration to do that, kind of help spread the word about their work. So, but it seems like they have, uh, their big ambitions for their group this year. So it'll be fun to work with them.
It's great. Anyone else?
Do you want a Nani update?
Um, I think we're in good shape on that because I, we met with a Nani group last week. So I think we should be fine. The only thing would be the invitation to, do you want to just put that out there in the public now for the committee?
Very briefly, the sister city relationship with Nani, uh, in Hokkaido, Japan, is one that's celebrating its 25th anniversary and, uh, we are hosting, we, meaning the town and the schools and private, uh, families, hosting five middle school students, three high school students, two adult leaders from town government, uh, one of whom I believe is a teacher, one who is a town official. They'll be here, uh, October 28th through, November 1, leaving early in the morning, November 1. Uh, they'll be visiting schools. They'll be visiting historic sites in town. For, uh, school committee and our superintendent, our high school principals and the band director, Mr. Nochi, the committee has extended an invitation to the Sunday night signing ceremony. This is where at our townhouse and live through, uh, a virtual connection with Hokkaido, Nani's, uh, townhouse, there will be signings in both towns almost simultaneously to recommit to the sister city relationship. Uh, it'll be a brief ceremony, but we think an important one and, uh, hope that everybody can attend.
And that's on Zoom and the townhouse on October 20.
On October 29th, Monday, the 29th.
Sunday, the 20th at 8:30.
School Committee Superintendent, Principals, uh, invited to attend in person. But certainly anybody is more than welcome to attend. It's a public ceremony.
Great.
Thank you.
Anyone else? And just in terms of the Chair's report, we have a PTG presence meeting and PA presence meeting tomorrow. The Chair's breakfast is next Wednesday. I don't think we had anything from our last Chair's breakfast.
Not that would be relevant necessarily.
Nothing really relevant. And that's all we had. Do you have anything else?
No.
Anything else? Okay. And then I'll give it to Dr. Hunter.
Great, thank you. First I want to recognize, and I didn't tell her I was going to do this. So if she doesn't want to pop a, um, video or audio, that's totally fine. Teresa Patoukonis is here tonight as our new Zoom master for school committee. And she will follow up by doing the minutes in Erin's place. So excited to have her join us and, um, she'll be behind the scenes. We'll, have her come on camera some night when we're ready to tell her ahead of time.
I think she did unmute.
Hi, everybody.
Welcome.
Hi, how are you? Nice to meet everybody.
Good evening.
Thank you. Uh, October 18th, the PD paths for this year kickoff. Kristen's team has done extraordinary work again, giving teachers lots of options. So excited for, um, bringing you those. And I'll certainly share them out either before or right after. So you can see the selection of offerings. Um, our letter today went out to K5 families about early literacy screening data that we'll be releasing during the parent conferences. So Desi has regulated that we have to release it for all family, to all families of kids performing under benchmark. We made a decision as a district. There's no reason not to share it with absolutely everyone. So we're excited to start to put that data, more formally in front of parents and giving them an opportunity to see how kids are doing. And it'll be dibbles, for K1 and 2, and then star for all the older kids. Uh, summer school, we sent a letter today noting that we're revamping our summer school structure for K through eight essentially. Um, going to be a little more targeted than it has been rather than a three hour, come and do a mini school for the month of July. We're going to be more structured in terms of inviting kids for targeted skill work. ESY for special education will run on its own. So the programs can build out the depth that they need, including some full day options. Uh, so it's going to be something that, you know, has a bigger continuum and not a one size fits all, which we think is going to be a much better, opportunity for kids. So I'll share more information as we get closer to formalizing all of that. Um, we're in November going to start working with Harvard on deeper learning, uh, especially at CCHS. At the middle school, it'll be a few meetings that will happen with the administrators. Uh, at the high school, we're going to be doing with the department chairs. So I think I mentioned to you, that and my goal. So excited to have that set up and, um, ready to activate. They'll work with the leadership team there, which includes the department chairs from November through the spring. To really help us define what deeper learning means to us. And I think the takeaway I had was we have to define our starting point. The scale of work is enormous and where's your point of focus going to be and starting to move that, that needle. Uh, in terms of the emergency shelter, we are really focused right now on the Willard population and being sure we're gaining our skills and trauma informed, learning and really reaching some of those students with that lens. Um, Mr. Lucy set up meetings with Framingham. They're visiting Boston, really trying to tap into the expertise that other districts have of the volume of trauma informed work that we do, they do, as we really stretch our wings and begin to, 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 you know, build some capacity there in an environment we don't always have to serve. So we're excited by the depth of that work. And I just can't say enough about the Willard staff and their commitment to serving these students well. Um, and my final comment is on the new school. The construction is going well over at the middle school site. We started to see steel go up last week. So, you know, from the ground emerges a school. So we're seeing, uh, the classroom wings start to take shape with, uh, the beginnings of a first, second and third floor and just can't be any, be anything. And just can't be any, be anything but excited as that happens. So, you know, really fun to watch just in a week's time and more to come, obviously. So. It's busy, but it's, it's all going, things are going well.
Great. Yeah. All right. Thank you. All right. And on to our discussion. So up first is the October one enrollments. We've sent you a lot of information in this week's agenda. And there are some things, Erin was out at the end of last week, so they, we realized there are some things that need to be attached to the agenda, which we will do after the meeting. And I'll also add everything into your packet, but the October one numbers are out. So I will give it once again to Dr. Hunter to discuss the October one enrollments.
So let me share. I can share these for you. So these are the October numbers that formally drive everything. These are what we report to DESI and also drive the regional agreement. So we have started the week before to really preview and be sure that we weren't going to see any surprises. We had thought it would be fairly stable for the regional allocation, the Concord-Carlyle split. That indeed is held true, so it shouldn't be a dramatic shift to either community. There's a little, a small point two percent, I think uptick to Carlyle, but that's a nominal dollar amount. So I think that's good news in everyone's budget building cycle. We've, we talked with Carlyle ahead of this at their request, which was great to help them know what was coming. And we continue to do the same for Concord. In terms of the other enrollments, I think you'll see, we're actually feeling pretty good about where things at. The elementary schools are fairly well-balanced. If we look across the three buildings, I have another version of this that goes into class sizes, and those are among some of the most well-balanced that we've had. And I'll just remind you, you want to add to Alcott and some of these others, some of the other enrollments that sit down below. Metco doesn't sit within this the way we pulled it, just for sake of, for the regional split, we, we don't include Metco, so we didn't include it here. So I think overall, it validated what we expected. We're down a little bit in places that we were waiting for some relief, especially at the high school. So to see that, you know, on paper feels really good. I think we're watching a new possible probable development here in town and what the impact of that will be. And where we are going to, you know, assign those kids as that comes online over the next couple of years. So lots of moving pieces, but I think overall, things are in a good shape. I feel good about the allocations at the elementary schools. That's something I'm constantly watching and making small tweaks too. So to see them not too discrepant and holding despite some of the variables we didn't expect feels pretty good.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So as these larger developments have come into town, we haven't always districted them to the school that would be their quote-unquote neighborhood school. And, you know, that has effect on those kids with longer bus ride, those kinds of things. I wonder, as we see or if we see, you know, another larger development and/or due to many different reasons, a series of larger developments, at what point do you consider looking at district? I know, it's traumatic, but districting as a whole, or do you not? Or do you just kind of one-off these, you know, I, I look, for example, I think Willard has the most kids. Is that right?
Yeah.
Yes. Like, if this project were to be greenlit, that's a Willard district. So, you know, would you one-off that development? Do you?
Yeah, I'm just. So there's a lot of variables, obviously, right? And I think those are the levers that I'm pulling right now. So because we had wanted to make sure Alcott was staying flush, we had redistricted the Nathan Pratt complex back over to Alcott. But when I say that, that doesn't mean all the kids who are at Willard from that, that complex picked up and went to Alcott. They're going to finish their tenure at Willard. The staff enrollments, their, the children of the staffs, the, one of the other levers I use to swing quite a bit too. I think that's worked quite effectively to have some malleability there, rather than put things in stone and then re, try to redistrict everybody. You know, we keep families intact within the developments or within the staff community so that we don't have families with kids in multiple buildings. I, I think that's avoided some major need to look at the big picture, which can be really, really challenging in terms of local school assignments. I'd rather move levers of folks who don't have connection to a school yet.
With this practice.
That would be my intent is to continue to do what we're doing.
The Alcott numbers are low. Without Metco, they would be incredibly low.
Yeah, yeah.
Forty-three versus.
But they have fifty Metco students.
No, no.
So I have to factor that in.
No, I understand that, but it's just to your point.
Yep.
Yeah.
Because I think the Nathan Pratt kids going to Alcott is, is a terribly long bus ride. I don't think that's a good thing. Kids to be on the bus.
Is Nathan Pratt.
The muse.
Different, where is Nathan Pratt located?
It's, it's by Stop and Shop.
The Prescott.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, yeah, okay. Yeah. That's what I thought. Yeah.
They're currently at Alcott.
And I think, I mean, I think as different things evolve, we can continue to look at this. It's something I keep constant look at. I.
Yeah, no, it's challenging. You know, I think we've made.
The Willard is dramatically faster for them.
Yeah, absolutely. Not disagreeing.
And, you know, I mean, again, I'll inject some humor. I think my mother was on a redistricting committee here in the eighties, and I think she's still recovering.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Very difficult. So, you know, I do, I, I understand the hesitation. I just didn't know, given, you know, so many upcoming changes, if it was part of any calculus, but if it works.
It's on the radar for sure.
Yeah, I think it's important. It's on the radar because as difficult and painful as it is, one thing that will be necessary if we have our hand forced is to know it before it gets so imminent that we have to do it more quickly than we want. You know, time is the only advantage we have with this. Nothing else is pleasant about it, but
Yep.
Time can ameliorate some of the, some of the pain. So I think even though, yeah, we want to work patchwork year by year, we've also, to your point, have to have this on our radar so that if
Yeah.
it's going to happen, we've got some running room.
Yeah, I mean, I, there are many districts that use people new to the system as the way to manage this. So you're not doing neighborhood redistricting for all the really challenging reasons that that brings. So. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions on enrollment?
I just had a question. Do you get, if I'm reading these right, you have about eleven hundred elementary and then six hundred middle school? Do you always lose five hundred kids?
Just in the grades, there's six grades versus three.
Right. So elementary's K-five. I know, it's literal. It feels really literal. Yeah. Doesn't have a.
So I was like, I think I'm reading this wrong.
Breakout.
I'm like, I know kids move to private schools and stuff, but I was like, wow, you lose that.
Yeah, not that many.
Okay, thank you. I'm like, I knew I was.
It was quick, Bob. Even I was like, wow.
Yeah.
Like, oh, that's a big number.
Right. Well, thank you for that. Any, anything else on enrollments? Are we good? I think we're good. All right. So moving on to our campus discussion, which we've broken out into two parts, one being the amenities building. And just as a reminder, the amenities building is a bathroom concession storage building at Memorial Field. And then the second piece of that is the track. So we're going to split them both. And I'm going to start with the amenities building, and then we'll have some discussion that Alexa will take over the track portion. So the amenities building, it's been on our agenda for a while now, and now we're, we're at the point, you have all the information that we all have. We have the campus advisory report. We've been in discussions with people that were on that committee, Lori was on the committee many years ago. And we've had some interaction with Gail and Associates about what it would possibly cost us to build that. Our best estimate would be about two-point-three million dollars, and that would include engineering, design, permitting, bid, construction. So both towns are aware that this is on our agenda. The town leadership is aware of it. We had FinCom, I believe, is aware of it, and we met with Victor from Carlyle. Carlyle FinCom's aware of it. So it's definitely on everyone's radar. And the first part for completing the high school was really to do that paving and lighting project. So that's what came first. As we know, that happened this past summer. We have a beautiful road with beautiful paving. It's much safer for everyone with all of our teenage drivers on the campus. And this has been part of our discussion really since twenty-seventeen, whether it was this school committee, prior school committees, other committees. So at this point, we need to decide what we want to do. And so I'm putting before you tonight, are we going to move a warrant article at town meeting to complete the construction of an amenities building? And I'd like to have some discussion about that. We had, and I will forward it to our Carlyle members, we had one person reach out to us about concerns about accessibility in that bathroom facility down there. We currently have porta-potties, just as a reminder. We do have a handicap accessible porta-potty, but that's not always, it may be accessible, but it's not always accessible. I guess that's probably the best way to say it. So I will just show you my hand first, and I think we should move forward with this and submit a warrant article to town meeting and let the town decide what they want. It's a community space. It's our high school building. And I feel a responsibility to the community, to the students that use those fields, to the teams, to anyone that's on that campus. As you know, we'll have thousands of people that use the campus during the year, over the summer. And I just think that now is the time. So I will then leave it to the rest of us to discuss if we want to pursue a warrant article or not. So as I said, my opinion is we should pursue this.
I, I have a question. I, I think, I definitely think we should pursue this, but are we in some sort of law-wise, like, are we out of compliance? Because we don't have, so is there, like, isn't this sort of a, like, I don't know what the penalty for that is, but this isn't just a, we want to do this because we want a bathroom.
No.
We're supposed to have a bathroom down there.
Yes.
So.
Yeah, I was going to go further than Tracy went and say, you know, to me, this is about that very thing. You know, waiting a year is one thing, waiting three is another, waiting five is even, ah, we're government, things are slow. I get that. As we approach ten years, I do feel like this is getting to the point of being inappropriate. And, and that's just sort of where I stand. So again, I'm, I'm in favor of this for, for that reason. We've, you know, our, the clock has been ticking on this, I think, long enough. And, you know, I don't, I don't know what the penalties are, truth be told, and I don't know when our luck will run out. I think I mentioned this wh- when things really clicked into focus for me was when, at a Chair's Breakfast that, that, that we attend, there was somebody who was discussing a single complaint by someone in a wheelchair over some accessibility issues in West Concord near the train station. And, you know, the, the town has really sprung into action there. And, you know, we haven't had a formal complaint yet, but I, I don't, I don't want to run the clock out on that and make anyone feel unwelcome or uncomfortable or uncompromised on our campus. I just don't think that's what we stand for, or that it's a good buck. So.
Two-point-three million, is that twenty-two heated bathrooms in a year-round facility? Is that what we're considering? Or what does amenities mean in this instance?
Well, we would need a, we do need a redesign. We need an actual, not a redesign, but an actual design. We don't have an actual design. So I think that we have a rendering. And so I think those would be some of the questions that go out in the RFP, like, what are we looking for? Is it heated? Is it year-round? I mean, can it be minimalistic? There are other facilities we can look at. Do you want to read?
Yeah, I mean, I can talk through what Gail sent us here. So they're basing the numbers off of a building that they just bid fourteen-hundred, fourteen-hundred-and-twenty-four square feet. The bid price was nine-hundred-and-ninety-seven dollars a square foot, which is pretty breathtaking for those of us who've been looking at price per square foot the last number of years. So, so the inclusion in this, the building itself is one-point-eight million for construction, contingency of about fifteen percent at two-hundred-and-seventy thousand. That would also include, well, and then additionally, the professional fees at fifteen percent, also at two-seventy. And that would include engineering, design, permitting, bid and construction services. And then that would total to the two-point-three million, two-point-three-four million, actually.
And per square foot was?
Nine-ninety-seven.
And what were the assumptions in, or actually the facts in that fourteen-twenty-four?
Yeah, I know there's bathrooms. I can't speak to anything else.
I don't know if there's something else. Okay. And I think it'd be contingent upon us to consider operational costs too. If we are adding a new building, albeit relatively small compared to the high school, but it's still going to be real, real responsibility. And we don't have endless headroom with our annual budgets, capital or operational. I think we'll need to factor that in.
And it would be net zero, because you potentially get that amendment at town meeting. So I think you need to get ahead of that.
You're, you're right, yeah. We will inevitably get it, I would predict. Yes, you're right, yeah.
Um, so is it a chicken and egg thing? I'm curious why we don't wait till we have a more detailed design?
That's my question. Well, we need money. We have to pay for a design, and we don't have the money to pay for a design. So we have to go to the town and ask for the design money and the construction money.
So how much would the design be? This is two-point-three-four for the design and construction?
Yes.
Designs included in that.
How much is that?
I don't have that breakout specifically. He included engineering, design, permitting, bid, construction, all within two-hundred-and-seventy thousand, twelve to fifteen percent total for all those services.
And basically, to ask anyone to do more than we, we've asked, we're going to get charged.
So I, I do think we have to throw the net zero and ask that question and get a ballpark.
Of what the net zero would be.
Yes. To make it net zero.
Make it net zero.
The sustainability.
Yes. Yeah.
Because.
It's going to be a, a barrier if we don't.
Right. I mean, we basically, yeah, new construction in Concord is supposed to be, I know it's not in Concord, but, you know.
Well, it's, well, it's at the region. That would be something that, you know, it, it could be an amendment at town meeting, but I guess that we would, you know, some of the codes are really green and it's, it's not necessarily net zero. Are we looking to build a net zero building? I don't know.
We won't know unless we ask, though.
Yes.
So the question really is, is are we prepared to submit a warrant article? So at this juncture, is this committee prepared to submit a warrant article? Because as we listen to Mr. Banfield tonight, like, we're in, under a time crunch. If we're going to do that, we need to discuss it. We need to vote on if we're going to do it or not, so we can get things moving.
Well, I like to, I like to see this discussed at the Select Boards and the FinCom at both towns. So the only way we could do that is to, to move forward.
But it would be our article.
So why? I understand, but they would discuss it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. They can discuss to support it or not. They also might do more investigation on potential legislation. I mean, the town administrator in Carlyle
Yeah.
Put forward a budget, a five-year plan where he has a twenty-five K slot for us for the next five years. So this would dramatically upend his capital plan.
Right, there, but they are aware of that this is a possibility and their assessment would be much less. Right. But I think that we have to decide, are we, do we want to pursue this at this town meeting? And that's our question that's on the table tonight. Yes, Carrie?
I have a question. Well, first, I just want to say, I think that it is past time that we do this. I don't think we should be waiting for a complaint. I think we should be doing this because it's the right thing to do. So I, I fully support doing this. I just am curious about the process of how we, how we get there, sort of like Cynthia was asking. I think if we, if we vote tonight in support of a warrant article, what are the next, what does that mean? What happens after that from a process standpoint?
From a process standpoint, so if we vote for it to move forward as a warrant article, then we would ask Bob and Lori to help us write the warrant, because it will come from us.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But, you know, in terms of like RFP process and, and all of that, I mean, I would look for some guidance from Bob on that for us.
And we would use this comp, this.
The two-point-three.
Two-point-three.
The warrant article would be.
Number we have.
Yeah. And how does that, so like, we would basically be writing a warrant article for two-point-three million dollars. Even though we don't have the design, wouldn't we do?
You're going to split it out between.
Between Carlyle and Carlyle.
Absolutely, yeah, the region. But we would be asking for two-point-three-four million dollars, even without the design.
Without the design, yes. Now, if it came in under.
We have a rendering.
Under, we have a rendering. Yeah.
The design gets into the specifics. So we have the rendering. The design gets into like, what kind of pipe you use, what kind, you know, so it, it provides a blue, you know, a plan for the construction person so that they can bid it. We know what it will be. It's just getting those, the specifics.
And then don't we have to go through the state to get the waiver on number of?
Can't do that without a design.
Do that without the design. Yeah.
And is there, are there costs affiliated with that?
That's included in this professional estimate. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think we need to do it. I just want to be sure.
And I guess I'm.
Clear and how?
I know, and it, it's not the perfect solution to get there, but I think it gets us, the goal is to build an amenities building. That was always the goal. That was in the capital plans, that was in the capital planning task force. Like, you can find it throughout all these documents. Throughout all these documents in the town. The goal was to build a building there. And now we sit eight years later. With a porta potty rental, which, you know, I had requested that in one of my report requests, like, how much are we spending in all of our rental fees? Um, for that. So we do already have operational costs associated with the bathrooms that are currently down there. But we are out of compliance and that is really my bigger issue. And I, I think that anyone that's been down there. Um, you can see, i- it's really not ideal and it's definitely not ideal. It's not, it is handicap accessible. But you cannot necessarily turn a wheelchair around in a handicap accessible bathroom. And that's where, you know, I really take issue with the fact that, you know, we, we're making this. Commitment to be civil, our money where our mouth is. I know it's a lot of money. I know that it's asking the town for money, but this was always part of our plan.
Right. I just want to say that. I'm fully in support of having new bathrooms, not that many bathrooms. So that's my problem. It's, it's, it's excessive and unnecessary and it's a waste of money in my opinion. We could go with five or six bathrooms, which would be. I understand that, but I would like to find a way to get legislation or some way to avoid wasting our taxpayers' money.
So I was just at Newton South who has a, um, they have this exact building. It's not anything fancy. It's a cinder block building with the roof on it. There were eleven bathrooms. I was only in.
I'll take eleven.
But, well.
Eleven women's.
Eleven women. So there were eleven in there. Um.
Okay, I'll take eleven.
I know, I know. But there's also a capacity issue. So that stadium is not as big.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's gonna be split. So the, the, it has to do with the capacity of the stadium.
No, I understand.
The Newton South, I know, that is the rule and we, there is no getting around the rule.
We did have a bathroom, but we tore it down.
Right, but once you build anything, you have to.
I know, but I don't think they were aware of that, honestly, because I don't.
Now we're left with it.
I know, but it's just, it's frustrating.
And having been trying to act, work with a number of different groups, including our design team from the middle school. And the reps that they work with and all the kids that are engaged on the LGBTQ front to work on the plumbing code for that. You, the best you can do is put in an amendment. I've learned more. It's, I wish it was the legislators, Cynthia, I wish it was. You put an amendment into the plumbing board with all these people rallying and supporting you. And they still have to decide if they're gonna consider the amendment. They hold a public hearing, which communication doesn't seem to be their strength. So you sort of stumble on whether or not they're gonna do it. And then ultimately, they, as a board, still get to decide if they're gonna change the code.
So.
So.
And they, and one more.
They don't. Not often.
So, so I think we're kind of doing this out of order because we're not doing any other, uh, warrant articles. I don't know why we have to rush on this one. My other question is, are we sure for the next five years, we have no other capital needs at the region? Because I think we need to be transparent about that.
The turf is gonna need to be a discussion at some point in the next few years.
I think we need to have a five-year capital plan, uh, to go around this. So we're just honest and transparent about the needs. Because we have asked so much of the town of Concord with the middle school and I'm so thankful that it passed and I'm so thankful we're building it. But I think we have to be really careful of our financial asks going forward, because it's, it's, you know, the, the debt is just, it's, it's getting overwhelming. And what are the other requirements that the towns have? Those Carlisle and Concord. I, I think we have to see the big picture, to see how this all fits in.
Well, and, and in general, I agree with the spirit of that statement. I, and I think, um. Where, again, we've inherited, that this group of seven has inherited sadly. Um, you know, a series of committees and I'll take responsibility in that. I was on it for, you know, three years that has kicked the can on this. And I do think. I would, regardless of the five-year capital plan, I, 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 I think our time is up. On this specific issue because we are not in compliance. And that to me supersedes, supersedes it all. We, I, I, I don't think it's appropriate that we continue down this path. I really, I don't. So that's, again, that's just sort of my opinion. Um, now, to your point, I think it would be wonderful. In addition to this, and yet adjacent and irrespective of this, to talk, to reexamine a five-year plan. That I think is a good thing, um, for the campus. Um, that's something I think we should talk about. However. Um, I, 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 I just, I think that the statute of limitations, that's something probably the right term, um, are, are up on this. Um, so that, I think that's why there's some urgency from my perspective.
Normally, the way we would handle something of this magnitude is to seek design money. Um, the minute we seek design money, we stop any clock that's worrying you about compliance. Um, it also gives us time to configure this within capital needs, uh, uh, that look at a two-town scope. Uh, but more importantly, I think it protects us politically because to, to roll the dice and say, give us design money. And when we're done with the design, we want the money in hand to just immediately build without visiting you again, town meetings, two-town meetings, not one. I think is a very high stakes gamble. It's unnecessary. Um, I would much prefer and I'm prepared to support the design money, uh, warrant article immediately. Uh, and, and that ensures we get this done right in all the different possible respects, including. Uh, uh, what the variance might be. Best case is what we want for variance. Uh, it improves the odds that, uh, we'll get passage once and then twice. Um, I don't like losing on a warrant article and then having to go back. Um, we, we did that on the road. It didn't work out very well. I don't wanna, I don't wanna have that practice be, uh, uh, something that we, we return to. I'm, I'm, uh, very supportive of design money for this and very supportive of what follows that.
One note I feel like I have to say on behalf of Gail, who did this for free, is the volatility of the market right now, which all of us are very well aware of. This price could go up quickly over a very short period of time. So just naming that this. This is as good as we can do for free. That part is true. Um, and even then you could get a design and you could still be up a half a million dollars in a.
More down.
Year or two.
Building trades go up and down.
We haven't seen much down.
No, we haven't. That's why some people in the industry are expecting it.
But I, I, I understand what you're saying. So in, in so doing it. In, in breaking it up, what you're creating is, while I understand what you're saying, you get some political points for being. Um, you know, you know, doing it that way. What you're losing is the potential for, uh, sa- cost saving.
You're gonna lose a year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's because now we have to do this over two years. So we could, we could authorize this money. Fifty thousand, sixty thousand, a hundred thousand, we don't know what it is. And then do all that due diligence for a year and then actually go to bid and have it be twice the price. This would compact that process to mitigate that risk by substantially.
Based on what we've been living.
Yes.
Less time, the better, but.
So ultimately, I think we're weighing sort of political optics versus the potential for cost savings. Um, that's sort of the way I see it.
The billing doubled in five years.
Yeah.
It was one point two when we last.
I just wanna, I'm sorry, do you want to go to court and Cynthia's point? Um, I agree, like, I'm on the municipal facilities in Carlisle and it just drives me insane sometimes how long all this stuff takes. And right, because all the prices go up. But, um, as I've come to. Accept, this is the world we live in and you. You unfortunately have to take it slow sometimes because we just got, we just redid, well, we're in the process of redoing the lighting in the auditorium at, uh, CPS. And that kind of really rubbed people the wrong way, because to them, they were like, this came out of nowhere. What, you guys didn't tell us you were doing this? And granted, we didn't, because a parent, like, he, he did all the work and was like, because the lighting's from like, I don't know, when the building was built. Um, and, uh, we got CPA funding for it, but a lot of people in town were really like, where the heck did this? Price tag come from and you're just dropping this on us? So I do see their point of, you know, sort of.
It's awful.
Walking people into it and getting them on board rather than going, boom, here, we need this two million dollars, give it to us now. And then they go. That wasn't on our plan. So, right, I'd love to start building it tomorrow, but that's just not. Where we live, any of us. And you know what I mean? It just takes.
Sharon, and a different perspective, I guess. I, I'm in support. I think we need the bathroom. Um, but to Cynthia's point, it's one building with a lot of bathrooms. Um, just thinking of campus development in the future. Have we considered maybe two buildings and splitting those bathrooms, especially where we're thinking about building a track that's on the other side of the campus? And I think that will maybe highlight some other accessibility issues. If you have to go from the track to the football field to get to this building and where we don't have a design, maybe that's something we can consider.
So you need to be within a certain range of the stadium? You wouldn't even be having this discussion if BD was about three hundred feet closer to Memorial, because we just say they could use the BD bathrooms. So.
Oh, that is very prescriptive.
And there's no, um, like a track wouldn't have the capacity. So like up at the Doug White Fields, they don't have the seating capacity. Which is why that bathroom building is smaller. Um, but it's the capacity of the Memorial Stadium, which is eighteen hundred.
You're not wrong, Sharon.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, no, no bleachers at a track or a bunch of other spots.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
We won't be building those.
Right.
Design, designing many buildings.
Yeah. A- and I think we're all in agreement that, that it is necessary. It's just, it's how do we get there? And, you know, I do worry about a complaint coming our way about the accessibility. I mean, it's, it's. It has been eight years in the making and maybe we'll get a complaint, maybe we won't. But do we want to run that risk? I don't know. And I, and I to- certainly understand the tax burden to the taxpayers. I, I. We all live here and we know that well, but it is a responsibility to where, as a school committee, to advocate for that campus and the needs of the campus. And I think it's been on documents through the past eight years. You know, it's been out there, but it just has never been brought to completion.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, to Carrie, to your, to your point about it coming out of nowhere, I mean, well, I think it's been on a, I mean, I've been on this committee, what, three plus years? We've, we've discussed it here quite a bit, um, not last year, but the year before. Um, and the year before that. Um, so it's been discussed.
I'm not saying it's coming out of nowhere, but to.
Right.
You know, to people who aren't, you know.
I think it's well socialized here. People understand that it's coming. It's just been about, you know, the when and, and having a committee prepared to. To do it or not. And, and to Tracy's point, um, you know, when we've looked at that. Whatever it's called, that campus advisory's recommendation, it was, it was very evident that the priority needed to be the road. So kudos to the committee. We got that, that, you know, we were able to do that. I think, I think the, that. You know, we, we just need to keep the momentum going again, because we're approaching ten years of this, um, building being open. Um, and just, it's tricky.
Yeah, I think from my take, if you've got a complaint, typical state, whoever's gonna be the authority, the complaint goes to. The mandate then becomes a corrective action plan.
Right.
You will lose control over the timeline and the pace at which all this needs to happen. You'll just get ordered to get it done. And they'll tell you how soon it needs to be done. It's usually, it's the corrective action plan that drives the response.
That's helpful. There's also something about, okay.
I just had one quick question, which I know this is a little far ahead, since we're just still at this point. On that rendering, do we, um, is it at least in our minds that, like, this isn't just, uh, men and women's bathroom? But there's, uh, you know, gender neutral?
Yeah, our commitment to gender neutral bathrooms. As a district, we, we make that commitment.
And probably a changing situation or three.
Probably, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. So I think we have exhausted that discussion, so we'll wait till we vote, uh, later in the agenda. And I will turn it to Alexa to.
Not as high stakes, the track.
Track discussion.
Um, okay, so we've begun our discussion on the track. So, um, I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Hunter in a minute, but I just want to recap for all of you. I was charged, um, two meetings ago, uh, to approach CC at play, um, to determine a few things. One, do they still exist? Two, um, are there, is there funding there? And three, would there be interest in, um, officially partnering with, um, essentially us? Who, we will be the, the group that advances, um, if needed to, uh, you know, some kind of warrant article to. Um, potentially bridge the delta of what they're able to fundraise, if they're able to fundraise. And the answer was, yes, we are, we exist. Yes, we have money, not a lot. Um, and three, we would absolutely be interested. There was, um, the one caveat that they expressed was, we would want some, um. Support from you. Again, if we are going to do a public part, private partnership, both sides of this partnership need to affirm commitment. To this project. So, um, that is sort of what we wanted to discuss tonight. Um, is, you know, can we signal, um, our commitment? This group of seven today to this public, uh, to this partnership. Um, again, understanding that, um, you know, it, it becomes a part of the records for future committees to look at. And say, you know, this was, you know, affirmed by this school committee. Um, and I will let Lori talk about her discussions with, um, the track groups in school.
Right, which I didn't do directly. I asked Erin Jankis, our athletic director, to reach out. So he reached out to the track. Uh, faculty, essentially, not to stretch beyond the volunteers, to the volunteers at this point. Feedback was very similar. They, they did connect loosely with the volunteers. Uh, and the feedback they got was very much similar, separate and distinct, but similar to what CC at play's response was. There's energy and a willingness to engage, uh, but they'd like to know that this is the plan the school committee has. So they're not raising funds for something that isn't a solid, uh, intention of the committee and the district at large. So I think you're in the same place with all the fundraising bodies that they're looking for.
And I think the good.
Formal intention.
From both groups, I don't want to speak out of turn with, with your discussions, but there was optimism. Hmm. Um, they're aware of, uh, the overall estimates right now, which are two million-ish. Um, and there was optimism that they could, um, if not fundraise in the entirety. But make a significant dent. So I thought that was, um, very optimistic. But again, they just want, they, they want to have some credibility as they go out to larger scale donors. I think that this is not gonna be, um, an effort that is looking for, you know, um. Smaller kind of donations where there's a lot of grassroots. I mean, I think they'll do that, but I think, um, there have been. On a quick cursory look, there are some sizable opportunities, um, that they, that they've identified even this far in advance. That could help really propel the fundraising quite quickly. Um, and I, again, I thought that was optimistic. So.
My understanding that the track community is aware that we're handing the keys essentially to CC at play and they're comfortable with that. Is that a correct statement?
No, that, yes, they would like to be a partner in that.
I think they would like to partner.
Yeah. Okay, so how can we make that clear in our discussion tonight?
I think that what we're, what we're, what we are seeking to demonstrate to both the, the smaller track community. Which is, you know, very specific and very narrow. Um, we affirm our commitment.
I have a big disagreement with that statement. It's actually one of the biggest teams.
No, 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 no. I just mean, but whereas CC at play was, um, a multi-sport organization. They were not discriminate about sort of how their funds went. They could, if you were, if you needed a soccer field, they might be your people. If you wanted a basketball court, they might be your people. What, I, I'm talking about the, the narrowness, not in the amount of people. But in the specificity of who the funds would go to. So, so CC at play is willing to support this. Um, and, 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 and fundraise specifically for it, um, as, as would, um, the track groups who are obviously.
Certainly they're gonna need, they all work together, I would assume.
So is the question basically, do we want to track in that space or not?
Well, and, and are we, are we providing them with the requisite credibility to go out to larger scale donors? Because we have said publicly that this is what we are.
The intended.
They are, yeah, the intended.
Do you have a sense of what the, um, like what a vote would, like what the language of a vote would be?
Can I do an add-on to that? What, what's, what, what is the degree of formality to the agreement that would give CC at play the confidence? That you say they need? Is that kind of where you're?
Yeah, I'm just curious of what you, as I think about.
I know, I.
Like, I, I think that makes a ton of sense. I understand why they would want credit.
I mean, maybe, maybe it could be enough for all, for all of us just to verbally affirm our commitment. Um, I was thinking, you know, the language could be as something as simple as that, you know, this school committee. Encourages, authorizes, I don't know what the verb is to your point. Um, you know, affirms our commitment. encourages authorizes, I don't know what the verb is to your point, um, you know, affirms our commitment to, you know, fundraising towards a track because it is how we, we see the intended use of that space.
Maybe it is.
Courts usually, the wordsmith, but, um, yeah, the intended use of that space. Um, I don't, and again, I don't think it needs to be, you know, some prescriptive thing. I, I just, I just, I just want them, you know, the, the sentiment was, this is a partnership. Can you, can you ensure your commitment to the partnership? And I understand that. I think that, so whatever language we adopt, you're a language person as well.
What you're thinking of this.
Um, I, I, you know, truthfully, I, I hadn't because I wanted to see, you know, sort of where we were.
Like, don't, like, I'm just going by what I know from Carla on the playground. Like the school committee had to vote that it could happen because it's on our, you know.
Ultimately, what we would need to do would be eventually to accept the gift.
Right, like we have to say, yeah, we want.
Yes.
Track.
And that will be for a future committee upon.
They need to know that they're not going to fundraise for this money. And then they go, well, no, we're not building a track there.
Yeah.
So. So a little more detail, what will we expect the timeline to be? Would they be initially fundraising to do for us to go out and do a design?
Do we have a design?
We don't. We have the same kind of render.
Yeah, the render.
The amenities building.
No, it's possible.
Yes, we know it's possible.
Um, I think ultimately, uh, so I, I, I do think the way that, that, um, the bathrooms have been proposed is very common. Oftentimes, you know, we, you know, we, we might not have done that, but it is, I think, common to put everything into a single warrant article. I know we checked, um, we did our due diligence on that. It's, this is, that is not, um, an outlier kind of move. It is, it is quite common to bundle those two things together in a single warrant article for all the reasons we discussed in the previous conversation. Um, and there certainly are pros and cons to that. So, um, I think, I think it would depend on a lot of things, Carrie, right? Like how successful are they in the fundraising? What, how quickly are they fundraising? This doesn't necessarily, um, I don't want this vote, if we take it, to commit us to any kind of timeline. This is just to offer them the credibility that they need to go out and do this in, in, in a way that is going to be ultimately successful for them.
Yeah, we didn't, there was no, it was just, yes, like we've got a dog park that it's been two years now that the rec come over.
And I don't know.
Still not have the dog park, but we voted that they could build it.
Right.
And they're still, we're like, where's our dog park?
Right. Um, again, I also think too, it becomes part of like the public record in the same way that, um, you know, so if we were to take a vote, let's say, it again, it becomes part of the public record that informs future school committees, um, in the same way that this campus advisory account has helped inform us about what the priorities should be. So I think even, I, I, I think that's part of maybe why a vote could be important, um, just again, so it formalizes the public record.
I think we need to vote to say that, right? We, we want, you know, we want this track. And I also feel you need, which you said the track, uh, whatever it's called, the track. Then maybe that it has to be connected at school somehow. Like our, we used our SAC, so the chair of our SAC, he was the lead of the thing. So it was, um, I mean, I just happened to be on the school board and on there, but we did, did the PTO. I was part of the PTO and school committee. SAC was the chair. We had the, uh, elementary principal. So we had a committee. There was the Carl, uh, Castle Playground Project Committee was what we had. So you need a committee of people, whoever CC at Play is, and you need all the, um, so what I'm looking for. All the people who need to be there need to be on the committee.
Yeah.
So you can't have, you can't have CC at Play just be doing the thing and not have anybody from the school with them.
Yeah.
You need all the shareholders together on a committee.
You can make, you will be a part of that, I assume?
I assume.
Yes. So then maybe then the vote becomes much more narrow to Carrie's point. Maybe we just say it is our intended, you know, this school committee intends to assign or intends to use the field by the skate park to put a track. And, and then the, the implication therein is, so please go work to fundraise it.
I think that's right. I think that's, I think that's right.
We wouldn't add the piece that says, and we want to develop a public-private partnership? So that we start that ball.
Oh, and we support a public private.
Yeah.
Because until we see and until they see the language, there's, there's no formal handshake.
You writing over there?
Yes. Yeah. Oh, I'm taking notes too.
Okay, good.
I love it.
Um, yeah, I think, I think that's, I think that could be a really good part of it. I think, yeah.
It doesn't bind either party, but it sure sends them down that road.
Yeah, and it, it affirms the spirit of what we're trying to discuss.
And if we can't develop an agreement, then we can't develop something of a million dollars in magnitude anyways.
Sure.
The presentation is we can do it.
Does that make sense, everybody?
And do, and do you guys already know, like, is there now, I know this was a whole landfill thing, like, is that, so it's able to be built over there? There's no, I, I don't think there, like, you're not.
What's in that report?
Not in, you don't have any things with cons come, you do, you have like, we, we ran into historic commission, like, you don't have any of that. Like, there's definitely.
That, that's the.
But as long as we don't penetrate the cap.
Correct.
Right, okay.
Which is why that emerged.
Yeah. Yeah, right.
And, uh, I don't think we had any grave concerns about that design.
No. No. Lighting the track would be the big probable not because of the permeation of the cap.
If you don't have a bunch of other committees, if you, if you're not worried about cons come and historic committee and all, like, as long as you guys say, okay.
You've kind of done that work to your point.
Right.
Cause impermeable surface is natural resource, Department of Environmental Protection is the cap. So.
Then all they'll have to focus on is fundraising. We had to do a lot, like, we had to go with a lot of historic committee, like, we had to do all of that.
Yeah.
We're also going to have to go through the, uh, CPA.
Yeah.
Yes.
Those parties will be back at the table in no time.
Sure, yeah, for sure. Those, that application be from us and not from a fundraising entity. That's why I'm just trying to, CC at Play operated in a very different way last time. And I'm just trying to get clear, we leased the land to them, they, that's.
So I think they're just looking to fundraise. I think that the new, I think it's going to be a completely new group.
Yeah, it is.
I understand that.
It's going to be a completely new group and they're just looking to fundraise. And I, I think the track people are also looking to fundraise, but they can't start fundraising unless they know.
I understand.
We're going to get a track, so now we can go ask.
Raise for something.
Yes.
Right. All right.
I see my two stars over here, think about.
Collaborate on some language. Things of language, people sit together.
Um, anyway, that's you, Carrie, don't.
Okay. I'm in court.
Um, so anyway.
Am I brownie?
A little bit. You look like it. Um, all right, moving on, is that sufficient discussion for everybody?
See this?
All right. All right, moving on, and now we're really excited about this, the regional end of year report. Um, you, that is attached to the agenda and I will turn that over to Bob.
Good evening, I have, um, a couple of handouts that there was.
Can I just ask a big favor?
Yes.
I have not had any time to look at these, I know was not on purpose.
No.
But can we move that discussion to the next meeting? I don't, I just can't. I like to spend time looking at these things.
We did have them too by Friday afternoon.
No, no, these were not.
These last ones.
Yeah.
I, I think I'd ask you to honor the discussion and then decide if we can finish it today or not. We put a lot of work in to get this done for tonight.
No, I.
I'm happy to review it, I don't want to take any action.
Yeah, there's no action that we're taking, so can we just review it?
The transfers.
You can do that in a subsequent meeting.
Yes, that's why I'm asking.
We had to, all right, so let's, let's see where we get with this discussion, but I do think that we should, this is, I mean, Bob has worked tirelessly on these reports. We asked for a lot of information this week and we have a lot of data, so, you know, it's just.
Exactly.
We're going to honor the work and we're.
No, I say, I want to honor the work by doing my.
Bob would like to present tonight.
So that's fine.
So.
We'll do it again then.
Or one or two.
Go ahead, Bob.
Are there two more?
Uh, you know, I'll pass.
Oh, wait.
I have it.
Two more.
Oh, sorry.
Are there two more?
You all have it in email too, but we'll, we can make more copies. Got it?
We got it, sorry.
Good. Should I share on the screen?
Does anybody else see one?
Hmm, yeah.
Yes.
On here.
Yeah.
You?
Anyone else want one?
Okay, region.
I'm just going to share my screen for remote viewers. Okay, so, um, I, I have a lot of information to share, uh, starting with the region. Um, just at a high level, gonna explain what I'll be presenting. I'll be, uh, presenting information on the general fund for the region, um, information on E and D, uh, information on our special revenue funds and revolving funds. We have a little bit more detail, a significant amount more detail on those funds. Um, and, and then some comments, um, on some of the, uh, the, uh, significant items within the special funds. Um, and then lastly, the grants, um, and we have some detail on, um, what the grants are. I know you've probably heard expressions of what the grants are, but we have some detail on, on what they are, what they support, what they're specifically to be used for and how much we have for each, um, each type of grant. And then FY twenty-four, uh, Q one, um, you know, it's early in the year, but we have, uh, first quarter numbers as well. So starting with the, um, with the general fund, um, we basically fully expended our regional budget, um, of thirty-six point five million, um, with the balance of four hundred and thirty-three dollars, uh, deducting our encumbrances. When we look at the, uh, adjustments within the budget, the, um, the main, uh, some of these are, are items you've seen early in the year. Um, for example, in administration, uh, due to the reorganization of a Metco position, you know, we still have, um, overall the same Metco staffing, but one position was, is, is now covered by the Metco grant. Um, so the administration adjustments, a hundred and five is primarily due to that, um, Metco position being funded out of the Metco budget, uh, Metco grant. Within instructional, in instructional leadership, we have adjustments of five hundred and fifteen thousand, uh, downward. Uh, the bulk of that was from, um, a reallocation of funds for technology, which we had been able to, um, pay for on a prepay basis. We reallocated those funds to the CCHS access road project late in FY twenty-three, you might recall. Uh, that was about four hundred and twenty-seven thousand. So that came out of the IT budget. What that effectively did is, uh, took us out of, uh, a mode where we're able to prepay for technology at the end of the fiscal year for the following fiscal year. So we're now kind of real time in the budget. So, you know, we, we eliminated what was probably a luxury, uh, and we were able to, to build, um, during, um, COVID, um, when there was some budget savings and, and now we're back to what's normal. And it, it helped finish the access road project. Um, within the other school services category, we have increased costs. Um, a, a chunk of that is for homeless transportation. Uh, we also have, um, additional parents, special ed transportation. Um, and then when, within athletics, we have, um, seventy-five thousand for coaches' salaries, um, which increased. Uh, there were four additional teams, I think rugby, unified track, unified basketball and another team I'm forgetting. Um, and, um, so there's additional coaching costs for each of those. Plus an additional, um, contractual increase. Within, um, the next category, maintenance, um, we had an increase in the budget from the original budget as well. The bulk of that is from electricity costs, um, and a lot of that was driven from, um, kind of a surcharge within CMLP's rate, um, somewhat driven by, um, the crisis in the Ukraine with, uh, kind of put constraints on the supply of, um, energy sources. Uh, we do anticipate, um, some relief, uh, this year, um, based on communication from CLP, CMLP on what those rates are. But last year, uh, we were significantly over budget, um, and that was the driver. Within fixed charges, um, the bulk of that came from, uh, workers comp premiums and liability insurance. Um, those are items we have discussed in previous meetings. We are working with, uh, Maya to try to get back out of a pool. We're in a cool, um, where we're assigned to a carrier and, um, we've successfully worked with Maya and a company called AIM Mutual to, um, to have a policy placed with them going forward. So we anticipate some relief, um, in FY twenty-four. But that's what drove the, uh, the increased costs in FY, um, twenty-three. Um, fixed assets is essentially the, um, the CCH access road project, the four hundred and twenty-seven thousand. Um, there is some offsetting savings on vehicle replacement assumptions. Um, the budget had some assumptions related to lease and buy. We ended up leasing both vehicles. And the last item is program without a district, uh, with other districts, out of district tuitions. And, uh, in large part, that is due to us leveraging, um, circuit breaker funds. And, um, we also have, um, SR two funds which needed to be spent down. They had some, some, uh, dollars, um, earmarked towards out of district tuitions. So, um, some of that's one-time savings, um, on the, um, use of, uh, grant funds. Um, and then a strategic decision to utilize some circuit breaker funds where we, um, as you will see, have a healthy, uh, balance, um, going into FY twenty-four. So, um, that's the FY twenty-three, um, summary of the general fund.
And the circuit breaker reference was nine thousand category?
Um, that helped, yes, that was used to help, um, reduce what the general fund bore in out of district tuition costs. Um, looking at FY twenty-four, which is what I have next, I, I don't know, um, that's next on the agenda. And then I'll circle back, this is the general, and then I'll circle back to, um, FY twenty-three revolving funds and grants. Um, so FY twenty, it's early, there, there's actually no adjustments yet. Um, as you can see earlier in the year, we're not over budget in the programs with other districts. The last line, um, is, is only over budget because we, um, have not applied circuit breaker funds yet. And we have not applied out of district, um, funds in the, um, IDA grant. So, um, we will, at a future time, be bringing you adjustments, but at this time, we do not need to. So again, it's early in the year, we don't typically see, um, challenges, um, within the budget at, at this point. We, we certainly have done some analysis, um, and looked at, you know, where we need to focus. But we, we feel like, you know, at this point in the year, we're in good shape in the region. So I'm going to circle back to FY twenty-three. And, um, the next item I wanted to, to highlight was E and D. We expect to be right around the five percent cap. Uh, this is driven by favorable revenues. Um, we budgeted, um, at a time, um, this was back in, this is a while ago. Um, we budgeted twenty thousand in, uh, interest, uh, income and rates have increased steadily to a point where we had very healthy interest of three hundred and twenty-two, uh, favorable to the budget. Um, so that's the main driver in our favorable revenue. We're also favorable, the regional transportation reimbursement. There was an uptick in the percentage that the state, uh, decided to reimburse. Um, so that helped us as well, as well as them phasing in, um, I'm sorry, I scratched that. Um, but the uptick in the percentage helped, so about fifty-six thousand in total. We also had one-time revenues. Um, the, the district had paid some costs associated with the Edco collaborative dissolution and that, uh, cost was an estimate. Um, so we received some of that funding back thirty-five thousand. Um, they had some savings relative to what they, uh, projected initially. Uh, and then the last item is the shared cost. We have a dual, um, we have a student, um, that we have shared responsibility for with another town. And the district here had paid for the transportation and we received reimbursement after the fact from another district. And so that's applied to, uh, miscellaneous revenue since it's from a prior year. So the, the, all of that in terms of revenue is favorable, four hundred and ninety-five thousand in total. Uh, and that's offset by planned E and D usage, which we budgeted, uh, for of three hundred thousand, which was essentially all used because our expense budget balance was four hundred and twenty-two dollars.
So Bob, what, five percent equals what for E and D?
Uh, off the top of my head, one point eight, one point nine million, uh, yeah. And I know the exact number, but I just.
I just wanted to know, Mark.
Um, so, uh, the next thing I wanted to run through is, um, the, um, the revolving funds. And I don't necessarily know, um, so they're here for you to look at. Um, there's a lot of detail, some of these are gift funds that have, uh, a lot of small balances for specific purposes. Wasn't necessarily going to go through all of those, um, but I will comment on a few that I picked out that I think are notable. The school lunch revolving fund had robust participation this year. We also received, uh, some state funding for farm to table grants, um, to get local sourcing. And that helped, uh, the fund defrayed some costs, uh, of local product purchases. And so we ended the year in a very healthy position, as you can see from the ending balance. And, um, you know, it's a, a, a great place to be in, to be able to offer, um, kind of farm to table foods while still keeping, um, our balance slightly growing.
I have a quick question.
I have a quick question. It's not, now that it's free lunch, is the state giving us money for that or no?
They are. So the state reimburses us for the portion that the federal government does not reimburse us for. The state has a small, very small share initially. The federal government will reimburse us for a certain amount for all meals. Like, I'm just gonna, I think, maybe thirty thirty two cents, something like that. And then they'll reimburse us the full price, four dollars and thirty five, I think it is, for all students that are free and reduced lunch. So in Concord, in Carlisle, that's a small number of students. And so the rest of the funding comes from the state. So about ninety percent of our students, ninety five percent of our students who are not free and reduced lunch, that bulk of that reimbursement comes from the state. And they extended that through FY twenty four, which we're in. And we're hopeful it'll be permanent, but we don't have that confirmation yet. We also have students who pay for à la carte items on top of that. Like, there's, there's a, they have a pretty popular à la carte. People can get things there as well.
I don't know if anybody has answered this, but so the free lunch in mass is now like, that's free lunch forever?
They've used the word permanent when they voted it in.
Okay. So then to Bob's point, he said, like, for now, but so the they said there's free lunch, but the funding isn't necessarily there?
No, they're saying the budget will be there.
Okay, just wondering.
As guaranteed as any budget is.
It's gone through multiple iterations. I think I missed the last one.
Last vote was finally permanent, so hopefully it's embedded now.
Thank you.
Sure. So the school lunch revolving fund is in a healthy place. The Minnetman and Shobah Health Group is a group that it's a collaborative group that procures health insurance for a number of communities in the area, not not many. It's a kind of a small collaborative. And the administration for that group, there's some financial administration that needs to be done. Used to be done by Concord Carlisle Regional School District, and we got a small fee for that and paid our staff. MNHG has been a little bit late in reimbursing us, so we just received everything that was due to us. So that balance will go away. The athletic revolving fund balance was spent down slightly during FY twenty three. This is due to a variety of reasons. Some of this is that we have in the past been able to kind of absorb some of that and shift it to the general fund based on the budgets being favorable. We've also had a combination of of cost factors. The rental of these times become more expensive. There are more coaches due to the additional four teams that I mentioned. And so this is something, you know, we're going to look at, spend more time on. And so that's that's one balance that, you know, and I and I do think it's something that, you know, we were aware of last year that had a a very healthy balance and could be leveraged. But it's something as we look at the FY twenty budget, we'll we'll be looking closely at. Private grants and gifts includes many things, but primarily the the large dollars are from the Concord Ed Fund. And and some of those balances reflect things that are going to be spent down during FY twenty four that they recently awarded us. Circuit breaker funds grew. Our reimbursement went up, so our reimbursement for circuit breaker in FY twenty three is based on our FY twenty two special education expenses. The revenue this year that related to those FY twenty two expenses, the revenue from FY twenty three was one million, two seventy six, six seventy eight. Circuit breaker rules are that's the maximum you can carry over in a year. We're carrying over a million eighty five thousand, which is eighty five percent of the maximum carryover. That's also two hundred and thirty seven thousand more than we carried over last year. And that provides us a healthy safety net to cover some unanticipated unbudgeted out of district placements should they arise. One other thing I just wanted to talk about, just to make sure it was clear on, you know, these are not funds that you can spend on whatever you want. Each of these funds on this page needs to be spent on items that are for the purpose that they are intended. I think the one exception is the general gifts is an unrestricted gift balance, but most of these, actually, the rest of them are restricted to the purpose of what the donation or of what the fund is, the revolving fund, or in the case of the gift funds and what the donation was. I should also mention, even though it's it's fully spent down, you might recall that you approved a nonresident tuitions account. And so the ninety thousand we charged to communities forty five thousand for two students to attend our programs. I believe it was the pathways program. And so we've fully utilized those funds and applied it towards the cost of the program.
Real quick, can I just ask, what's does S H S G F stand for?
High School Gift Fund.
Gift Fund, thank you.
And so that signifies to us it's a donation. Okay, I'm going to keep moving here. The next item is I broke the grants into two pieces. One, I presented the the multi-year grants, Esser related. And I have a separate page for the annual grants that we received just in FY twenty three. S R two, you can see is basically it's now fully spent down. S R three, you know, as we planned, we have a remaining balance to carry over to FY twenty four. We anticipate fully utilizing that next in this fiscal year. A hundred and one thousand, five thirty nine. Some of that difference is actually the the position, the person that we hired was a little bit less expensive than what we had projected in our in our grant. And then the last one is ARPA IDA has some remaining dollars that will be spent down as well, and those are ARPA funds specifically for special education.
Both of these, when do when do these last two have to be spent down?
ARPA IDA will be spending down at the beginning of this fiscal year. I actually have eligible costs that I'll apply to this, so it's spent down. S R three is technically it's September thirty of two thousand twenty four, which is FY twenty five. It gets a little confusing in the years. So we, if we could, we, you know, if we had the option and we got to the end of the year, we could potentially carry it over to FY twenty five, but it's a little bit cleaner to spend it down by, if it's a faculty position, you can only, you know, their pay starts in September. We might not want to cut it that close.
Yeah, I know the S R funding is going away completely. Is is there ARPA? Is there the hope for additional ARPA funding?
Not not that I've heard. No, I don't think that we'll hear.
No, in fact, we've been getting clear messages. The COVID monies are done.
Okay.
Yeah. And then attached to sheet, a separate attachment. Have you seen the the grant summary?
That was like.
Okay, so we have all the grants, and so the 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 first three, Title One, Title Two A, and Title Four are called the Essa Grant. We actually apply in one application package for these, the Elementary and Secondary Education Act. Within it, there's Title One, Title Two A, and Title Four. Title One is really targeting low income students requiring additional resources. We use this primarily to fund tutors in our grant within CCRSD. This is, and the way the state, the federal government funds this is based on statistics on income levels in the town. And the the funding in the in the region is fairly small, twenty five thousand, nine seventy three. I'm not sure if they look specifically at the demographics within the school or within the within the school, so. And this is something I've seen in my last district too, where sometimes as there's older children and families are older, you tend to have less of a low income demographic. And so I'm just going to talk through the the region numbers right now. And so Title Two A, we use essentially for professional development for teachers, which is what it's intended for. Title Four can be used for Title One and Title Two purposes. We use it for instructional support staff. We don't have it at the region, so I'll skip that one. IDA is the core program from the U S Department of Education for Special Education Programs. And so this gives you a sense of the magnitude of funding. We received four hundred and thirty seven thousand on this grant annually. And there are some variables that's not, you know, it can it can vary slightly from year to year, but we're typically receiving in this range. It ensures that, you know, we apply these towards students with special needs. There's a small share of this that we have to make available to students in Concord attending private schools and or that are homeschooled. The early childhood grant, we don't have, that's at the region, that's for preschool. You can see the Metco funding. We've talked about that in previous meetings and how much do we get? So this kind of gives you a sense of what that is, four hundred and sixty nine thousand, specifically for Metco programs. We use this for staffing, administration, academic support, and for transportation costs. In this year, we applied for and received a competitive grant. That's the teacher diversification pilot. Our DEIB Director Andrew Nemici and our HR Director Denise Zahn applied for this and received it. We're successful in both districts. This was a grant that enabled and provided incentives to recruit diverse staff to the districts that were awarded this grant. Now, I've listed the comprehensive school health grant. So we're seeing by the health services nurse chair, she applied for and received this in FY twenty three. And the last one, actually, that's a mistake. It shouldn't be. There shouldn't be any dollars there in the region. That was for Willard. But in total, you can see nine hundred and ninety two thousand in grant funding, which is an important funding source to our budget that we don't necessarily talk about quite as much. But but it would be helpful to kind of share this and also kind of share the purposes and how we use the funds.
I have a question. Both columns have the same title. Do you already explain that? And I missed. Oh, CPS, I scrolled up.
All the way up to the top, yeah.
Okay.
And that was linked in the CPS agenda, just in case you missed that. I put that in the packet too. So I I'm not sure it was linked in the region agenda, so it was linked below.
It was.
Oh, it was. Was it? All right, I missed. I missed it in the top one. That's my bad. Thank you.
It's a lot this time.
For the teacher diversification pilot. So was that fifteen to each to?
Correct. Yep, just under sixteen. And I believe we got confirmation that we received it again this year. We applied. I actually might be jumping the gun, but I think we might have.
I don't think we've got gotten confirmation.
And has there been any, I don't know how these grants work, but I know like when we do grants at school, like, we want, you know, after we give you the grant, we go, well, what'd you do with it? So do you have to? This is a diversification. Do you have to show that you?
This one was really interesting. It was meant to incentivize retention, hiring, those sort of things. We ended up using most, all of it really, to incentivize our current staff, and we subsidized coursework. We subsidized MTEL. If we had support staff looking to take the teacher tests, we were able to help with that or provide some of the tutoring. We really became a really great opportunity to put out what would they benefit from? And we got a really nice eclectic list of coursework and training and support with other other things. Yeah, very positive.
Any questions?
Very nice to hear. We've got some competitive grants.
Yes. Yeah, yeah, we've applied for three more this year as well.
That's right.
Bob, I really want to thank you for putting this together in this memo format. I mean, everything is there. I feel like this is extremely transparent of where we're at at the region right now. And so I certainly appreciate all the work that went into this.
Yeah.
Sure. Couldn't fit the FY twenty three general fund in it. It was landscape, but anyway.
Well, it's a lot of work, a lot of information, and I certainly appreciate having it all together here. So thank you for that. Any other questions? Oh, okay. Onto the MAS C delegates. So I need to submit two names. A, well, actually, it's maybe more than two names. Yes.
So is anybody going to be there on Wednesday, which is the delegate assembly? Otherwise, we don't need to do.
We don't need to do this. Is anyone going to be there on Wednesday? I think Carrie is going to be there Wednesday. So, yes, you're the delegate. Looks like you're the regional delegate. You will not be the CPS delegate, so I'll just submit your name in. Thank you very much.
Do we need to vote that, I guess?
We're going to vote that. Yeah, that's just our discussion. That's an action item. So we're going to move on to the Concord Financial Audit Committee, the Regional Representative. So Court has been our representative for, actually for both committees, but apparently we need to have two representatives. So Court is going to continue on with Concord Public. And would anyone like to join Court to be the Regional Representative for the Concord Financial Audit Committee? Does it have to be a Concord resident court? Do you know that?
I don't know that. Has to be accepted by the Select Board. The way it worked is Mark Howell, who is charged with being the Select Board rep to the Audit Committee, read the fine print to say, yes, the Concord and Carlisle, Concord and Concord Carlisle need to be represented, but then it goes further to say there will be three community members and a total of seven on the committee. So if you do the math, where somebody's missing one, you're the one missing one. They would have been happy to say, well, we'll just make it four community reps if you want. And I didn't pose an answer to that. I figured that wasn't my call. But I'm thinking about it or talking with the chairs. They said, no, let's just field two reps. However, know that whoever sits on that committee is looking at all of the audits, the town and the schools. And when I said look at, it's really a pretty high level oversight, because by the time we see anything, Bob knows this very well. He scrubbed all his numbers, and then the auditor has scrubbed them again. So there's not a lot we do other than try to understand trends and concerns that emerge out of the audit.
So could you sell us on how many meetings will it be? And what is the charge? What's the experience necessary?
So you don't need to be a financial whiz. You do need to read at least the text that does some explanatory. Bob can help on on this. You don't need to wade into every detail, but do need to look at the auditor's analysis and the auditor's findings. And we historically come out, we town and schools with a quote unquote clean audit. But no auditor ever earns his or her salary until they find a couple of things they can recommend.
Yes.
And that's fine. You know, that's that's the nature of their biz. So they'll tell us what they recommend. And then a year later, they'll say, how'd you do with that? How'd you, what'd you do with our recommendation? So you will get your feet wet with municipal finance. But not in a way that intimidates you. You're never going to get put on the spot for whether or not you have an MBA or not, or whether you know public accounting or not. It's instead an oversight, a citizen oversight rule.
And so how many meetings and what time are the meetings?
Maybe maximum four per year, and the meetings are dictated largely by when the auditor is ready to give us something.
But what time of the day?
Usually eight thirty in the morning, Bob, historically.
I remember it's in the morning. I don't remember what time.
Yeah. It's usually an eight thirty to ten o'clock meeting.
Okay, so I will look to our Concord members. Any volunteers here?
Bobby, does that sort of capture it?
Yeah, yeah, I think, I mean, I can add that the FY twenty two region audit just, I have draft statements from it, so that'll be something I assume gets reviewed by the committee soon. Other than that.
So Court, is it town, schools, and light plant, correct?
Yes, correct. Right, because they are a separate enterprise.
I don't think they do rec. No.
No.
I remember that anyway.
Okay, so anyone interested?
Do it.
You'll do it?
Yeah, and just remember not trying to that Mr. Booth will probably be going off. So we're gonna.
You'll be back at this conversation shortly.
We'll be back shortly. Okay. And what time you're at the meetings? Or throughout the year?
Can't, well, I would say
It's unpredictable.
Winter, we're kind of busy, busy relatively. And because region is ready for review, I expect there's something in the next eight weeks.
Okay, so you two can decide who's going to represent the region, who's going to represent CPS now that we know it's Concord members, so.
Which will be a technicality, because once you're on the committee, you look at everything.
You get everything. Okay, it's fine.
The Select Board approved Court a CPS member at six o'clock tonight, so I think you're Concord for the time being.
All right.
Well, that was. You could just send that to Mr. Dane.
Yes.
Yep.
Sure will.
See you, see you, Mr. Howell.
Yeah, sure will, yeah, I'll see you, see both of you two, how about that?
Okay, there you go.
Perfect, then we'll close the loop on that. All right, so that's Concord Financial Audit, Bob, you did the fiscal year grant summary also, so we're done with that. So now we're on to our action items before we close out the regional meeting. So the first vote is a vote to approve Carrie Patel as our regional MAS C delegate.
So moved.
And do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor? Okay, I'm gonna ask you to vote to approve the regional FY twenty three final year and transfers.
We're gonna do that.
We're gonna defer. And the next one, you don't need to, because there's no.
There's no quarterly transfers, okay, remove that, yep. We're removing the quarter one, FY twenty four. Right, now we're on.
The fact that there were no transfers.
That's the only thing.
Yeah.
But I think we can't, I mean, we could.
Let's do it.
To accept the report.
Yes.
Any discussion?
With no transfers.
With no transfers, right? So that's.
We're gonna get in the minutes.
Yeah, I think it's important to note that.
Yeah, yeah, okay, all in favor?
Hi.
All right.
Second for the record, did we have one?
Uh, we did, who just, Carrie Rankin seconded. All right, and now we're moving on to a vote to approve a warrant article for an amenities building on the CCHS campus. Anyone like to move that?
Well, do we have a, we need language.
Language?
Yeah.
This is in, this is going to, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Article for the amount of two point three four million dollars, which would include.
Do you want to just do it, why don't you just do it? Nope, I don't want to do it.
Uh, if you do it, I'll move to amend.
Um, okay, Lori, do you have those, what it includes?
I, I would like to make a motion.
And this, will this require a town vote, both towns would?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
To, okay, I would like to move to advance a warrant article for an amenities building on the CCHS campus in the amount of two point three four million, which would include professional services for engineering, design, permitting, bid, and construction.
Second, okay, discussion.
Move to amend. Uh, I move that the amount be reduced in order to make this a multi-year effort. The first year being money's moved on a town meeting warrant to both towns for purposes of design.
Second.
Okay, so we're gonna have discussion on the amendment first, and then we'll go back to our original motion. I'm gonna really test my skills here with Robert's rules, I don't know.
So my, my argument was one, I think we're more likely to prevail in both towns the first time we seek a multimillion dollar investment so soon on the heels of other big ones. Secondly, I think it's more consistent with our time honored practice for how we do capital projects of this magnitude. And I think we don't want to say that the fear factors that some of us hypothesize are, are reasons to shortcut the, the normal pursuit of a capital project like this. Costs may go up, costs may go down, but let's know what those costs are and have a clear picture of what in fact we're gonna build and what our strategy is to, to move it forward, and I don't think we can do that by a, a sudden commitment to a single number based on a pretty, what's the word, preliminary, an informal estimate from one firm.
And I think those, well.
Said you guys found that.
Again, it, it is not on, the way that the motion was moved is not uncommon. It is very, is typical, it might not be typical in our recent practice, but it is typical. And I'll make a quick comment, and I, I totally appreciate and understand Court's arguments, and there's a piece of me that recognizes their intellectual coherence. I just think those would have been great arguments if we were in two thousand eighteen and this building was three years in. I think that in year eight, those arguments have just a little bit lost their merit and muster for me personally.
I, I have to say, I agree with you on that, but at the same time, I think I don't think I could be wrong, and I don't speak for Carlisle, but I don't think they'll see it the same way. I think they're gonna see it as something new, even though this, you know, two thousand eighteen and just being on some committees over there and we're finally getting our stuff in order, like we're, you know, we finally just put a master plan together when we haven't had anything for the last twenty years. And that's, you know, I haven't even been there twenty years, so you just have to work with what you got now. And I think, even though this has been a longstanding thing, it's not to the people who are in charge now on committees. And I just, I feel especially in Carlisle, they're gonna be like, where did this come from? This wasn't on our planning, we just paid the school, you know, this, so regardless of, you know, like I said, I would love to start building it tomorrow, I'm gonna be getting in bathrooms. But it's just not, I, I wanted to also happen, and when you're in little towns, when you do things that people don't, you know, when you just come at them, sometimes that might chin the foot. So.
Yep, Carrie, go ahead.
A question, have there been conversations with Carla?
Carla, yes. So, so they're fully aware that this was part of our plan to begin with as a school committee, it's been out there. It's been, it was not a shock to the Finance Committee, I don't believe it was a shock to their Town Administrator either. This has definitely been something that has been discussed. And for me, I'll just, I'll just speak to the fact that it's not a question of if we need to build something, it, we do need to build something. It's a question of when are we gonna do it? I feel a responsibility to anyone that uses and visits our campus. You know, I, I spend a lot of time down there, I think, you know, you look at graduation, we're bringing in extra bathrooms, where, you know, there is a need for a facility down there, and I, I do believe that the costs are only gonna escalate. If we've learned nothing over the past five years, that is what's happening in construction, maybe things will change, maybe they won't. I don't live in, you know, fear that there's gonna be a complaint, but I feel a responsibility to our students and community members that are accessible, to have an accessible building for use with changing rooms and all sorts of things for people that, they're not children that might require a changing room down there, they're adults that are in wheelchairs that might require that. So to me, it's, it's more of my commitment to make that more accessible. So for me, it's not a question of if we build them, but it's when we build them, and, you know, I'm more of the mentality like, we should just do it while it's cheaper, because it's, it has, it will be a warrant article. We're not gonna be able to fundraise for these bathrooms, no one's gonna give us any money for it, it will be a warrant article in both towns. Any other thoughts before we vote on the amendment?
Well, we just know that we're really not arguing the merits of bathrooms, okay? I, I think we should stop that conversation, because my sense is that we have consensus around the table that we need them and we, we've needed them and we're gonna pursue them. So it's not, it really shouldn't be a debate about whether, whether we want bathrooms or not. It's about how to get them.
Yes.
So are we ready to vote on the amendment?
Uh, question from Gail, what was the design estimate that they had?
It's embedded within the two hundred and seventy thousand, we don't have it broken out, but I think on your, I'm probably about to pick up on your line of thought, you don't need a warrant article if all you're doing is going for a design. I think that's either an operational budget discussion or an E and D discussion or some other funding source, because.
But politically, the argument for, let's say, a seventy five thousand dollar does not exceed design number is we broadcast to the whole town in Concord and the whole town in Carlisle that this is coming, and that we're gonna do it right and get ready for it, because the big number's coming in a year. So I think addresses what you're referring to.
Well, if that's the case, can we just do the study? Do we need to?
Well, you'd have to build it into your FY twenty five.
But we'd have to do that anyway, or I guess we would.
No, if you got.
That point, then we wouldn't be able to even do this study till next fall.
Right, yeah.
So we're really, we're talking now about a three-year delay, because then this year, we can't do anything. Next year, next fall would be the soonest we would be able to allocate any money towards the design of a study and the, or the design, and then twenty twenty six would be when, so you're talking about now three years of escalation in construction costs.
What's the cost of the design again?
We don't know.
I wouldn't guess not that, that could be more expensive than seven, that could, could be more expensive than seventy five. Like, it's a, it's a full design of the building, it's not like it's just a study, yeah.
I also.
It's within the two seventy though, so proportionally.
The other thing I'm thinking about is like, I, I totally hear you, Carrie, on the, and I, and I'm like, thinking a lot about this, like, how do you surprise, surprising towns or community members about the cost of something? But we're talking about, and, and, not but, we're talking, if we're building a middle school or building something with like actual architectural design or how, or like some type of appeal, like I would, I, you know what I mean, like, we're, we're building.
It's not that exciting.
Like a bathroom.
Might wanna have a say in what it looks like, how it feels, like, we're really, we're building a bathroom.
We're not debating the skylights.
Yeah, exactly, like, I, I feel like this might be, I think, I think in general, you're a hundred percent right. And I, and I, and I could be wrong that you're not right this time. But I feel like when you're saying we're building a bathroom, people know what, it's a stall, I don't know. I sort of am not sure that, I, I feel like this might be an exception.
I'm, logistically, I'm just asking now, because you just laid out that timeline, if this goes to warrant and it fails, are we then able to, in the next year, budget for the design anyhow? Like, do we have a fallback?
Yeah, we could.
You could do the E and D study and then you still go into that.
Yeah.
The same time.
So, yeah, it's a fallback.
That's kind of a fail safe.
Right, yeah.
I would like to know how much the study would cost.
I can reach out to Gail tomorrow, I want to have that answer for you.
Let's talk about it at the next meeting.
It's a design, this is called.
It's just a design, yeah.
It's a full design, the previous thing they did is like.
I understand the difference, yeah, yeah, this is.
So it's some part of two hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
But regardless, I think it doesn't, like, I, now I'm interested in what Carrie Patel's saying. Even if the warrant article fails, we can still pursue.
This other.
You know, so. You know.
That was just my only to go.
Even though I understand that, but again, I also think again.
We can't, whatever, if it's like.
We haven't.
We don't know what the towns are gonna say.
We have, yeah, but I think also to go back to, to synthesize the carries, sort of two points, you know, we are talking about something so basic that is a bathroom, that is mandated by code, that we have kicked the can on for nearly a decade. This is not particularly interesting, particularly sexy.
No, but it's a lot of money.
I think that's subjective, you know, I, I, you know, relative to larger project.
Their capital.
Right, no, I get it.
And look at capital plans.
Yeah, but I think.
We're getting squeezed every which way, so I don't, I think it's very, it's not a good for us to say that it's not a lot of money, because it is a lot of money.
Again, it's required by law, like, I don't know.
Yeah.
But we're gonna have to do it.
Somebody might say, I don't want the storage, I just want the bathrooms.
We're not arguing whether we're gonna do it.
No, I know, but we're also not, we're not taking that, we're not taking that ability away from people.
We don't have a study.
But that doesn't, there's gonna be lots of opportunities to engage.
Because I would like to see more detail on what all the, all the components will cost us, and what about a net zero? Because I think that, you know, I just think we do this the right way, we'll have a much better chance of being successful.
You're talking about adding money, I'm confused.
If that's what's necessary to pass muster in both towns the first time, then that would prove to be a strategically sound move. We, we've gotta look at it and decide if that's, if that in fact is gonna work to our best advantage. It's not, we're, we're not arguing the building, we're arguing.
Oh, no, I get it, and I understand that.
I think this is the last conversation we would have on it, like, it would be a continued conversation, we would be able to talk, as far as I understand, we'd be able to talk about net zero, we'd be able to talk about.
We would need a design, we could talk about it all we want, but we can't show people a town meeting what you're gonna, what you're paying, what you're giving us the money for.
But we can show people at town meeting why we need it, we can show them why we need that facility there.
They will understand that, but again, I think, I like the two-step process, I think it's a much better.
Well, is it possible to do the design, I mean, to look, to look at finding the funding to do the design before town meeting?
That's, you wanna have a real complicated transfer here.
Right, I mean, and, and do we wanna take money out of our operating budget to do that?
We could take it out of E and D.
You have to get approval, but.
Right.
From the committee. Yes.
So I think we should vote on the amendment.
That's, yeah.
I think we've had some discussion about this, I think people have thought about it, so we have an amendment on the floor. Will you just repeat your amendment, Court?
Well, note that it is minus a firm number, because we don't have that broken out yet. So we need to come back and clarify warrant language with a number. But I'll let my, my amendment, amended motion stand that we, we move forward on this in the form of a request through a warrant article for design monies.
Okay, so all in favor?
Wait, can I, oh wait, sorry. Of course, from a timeline perspective, can we get a little bit more information on what it would cost to get a design, like, both for this amendment, but then also for the purposes of seeing if it's something we would wanna do with the E and D money? I feel like it's worth the conversation to figure out if we do wanna go to town meeting with a.
That's my same question, what is the timeline, when do we have to have a warrant?
And so.
December.
December, but we need.
We have three meetings.
Three meetings.
Wrap it up, so, yeah, you could do what you're saying.
We could wait till the next meeting to vote, but we do, I mean, ultimately, we have an amendment on the floor that we have to deal with.
Yeah, unless it gets withdrawn.
Well, something happens, I think, when we just have any effort to move forward on this, we've made then some kind of declaration, whether it's been one year or ten years that we've been thinking and talking about this, this would be the first formal move to say we're moving forward. A lot of details to be worked out, but the, the traction's there, as soon as we make any kind of affirmative vote to do anything to move this forward, I think it serves us well.
Can I understand exactly what the information that you would want to clarify and be able to vote on this? What exactly are you looking for?
Well, I'll take a, take a guess, one is, we would want to, and I'm thinking out loud here, we would wanna share some basic, minimal requirements, and then a couple of alternatives like net zero, so that Gail has something to work with.
So I'm happy to ask a question or two, but they're doing this.
They're doing.
No charge right now, so.
This is something that we would have to.
I think the minimum for the discussion would be to understand what a cost of a design is, so we can ascertain whether to do that out of E and D after you guys analyze whether that would be.
That's what I would wanna know.
You would wanna know that, what the design costs.
What it would cost, not the cost of each design, just the cost.
Yeah, we can't get that, I know.
But like.
Where the companies to.
Cost of design.
We've worked with.
Yeah, but Gail knows this project, that was why we.
We have a long relationship with them, and this is not the first.
They did all the schematic work on this.
Off the books.
Why they can do it for free.
Question, is your, is your FinCom aware of this?
Uh, we, we have talked about this building at a lot of meetings.
Yeah, we got our, our girl D orders on. She's been very regularly attending, so.
Hey, anyone need any other information? So Court, would you like to withdraw your motion?
By no means.
By no means, he's not withdrawing his motion, okay, so let's vote on Court's amendment, all in favor?
Wait.
You're the worst.
Wait a minute, I keep on trying to vote on the amendment.
How do we vote if we want to get this information before we take a vote?
You'll vote no.
Do I just?
Then you vote no.
I don't know.
Or you would.
Another amendment?
No, I think you would, I think you would maybe vote no, and then make another amendment with what you needed.
I would offer up that my inability to come up with design figure, which is a portion of this two seventy, which is a portion of this two point three four million, is just as uncertain as the two point three four million. That's a, that's a pulling out of the air too.
Based on an actual project, twenty twenty three.
Yeah, yeah, right. Are we ready to vote on the amendment? Are we ready to vote on the amendment? I will ask again. It looks like we're ready. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, amendment fails. Now we are back to the original, um, motion, which is, Alexa, I'm going to ask you to read it again.
I move that the Concord Carlisle Regional School Committee advance an amendment in the amount of two point three four million dollars, which would include.
A warrant article, sorry.
Sorry, did I say that?
You said amendment.
I move that the Concord Carlisle Regional School Committee move a warrant article in the amount of two point three four million dollars for the construction of a facilities building on the regional high school campus, which would include building, contingency, and professional fees.
Do we have a second?
Second, a second.
Only discussion.
Are you going to make an amendment?
I, I have a question. That, but. So that's just approved to write, that's not what the warrant would say, right? Is that all the warrant would say? Like, is this just approving to put a warrant out there?
We're gonna have to get to the formal language.
This is to approve a warrant article for the twenty twenty four town meeting.
Meetings.
Meetings, yes, meetings. Hey, any further discussion?
Well.
Yes, go ahead.
But it's not binding, like, we can, as we get that, we would have other opportunities to.
Edit, get questions answered in between times, yes.
Well, more.
Yes, we still have three meetings to amend, change, withdraw.
Okay, so great, so.
Say we got down the road that there was, you know, the design was going to be, you know, I don't know, five hundred thousand dollars or something.
Under two seventy.
Yeah, it's under two seventy. So say we get too far down there and we're like, wait a minute, stop, like, let's reconsider.
Okay.
We could do that. Any other discussion?
Can, can you, regardless of the outcome of this vote, uh, could you, could you ask for what the cost of the actual cost?
I already emailed him while you're mending and debating.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Like the minister record that I've abstained.
Me as well.
Okay, so Court Booth and Cynthia Rainey have abstained and, uh, the motion passes for zero two. Is that how you say that? I don't even know.
How did Sharon vote?
No. Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
So five.
Two.
Three, four, five.
Carrie? One, two, three, four, oh, five, sorry. I wasn't counting myself on that. It's been a, it's been a long meeting. All right. So now we're on to vote to support the addition of a track at the CCHS campus. We do not have motion language for that. I would.
I have, I have.
Thank you.
Ask for, yes, go ahead.
How do you turn this into a motion?
I move that the Concord Carlisle Regional School Committee, uh, vote to support the use of the former landfill space at CCHS for a track and that it commence, uh, conversation, commence efforts to develop a public-private partnership with CC at play toward this.
I don't think we should mention any.
Yeah, I agree.
Public-private partnership, uh, uh, to enable, uh, this, uh, this.
Fundraising effort.
This endeavor.
Dever.
I'll second that.
Hey, any further discussion? I really enjoyed the motion language. Thank you, Court, for getting that together on the spot and Gary. I appreciate the collaboration. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And last we have, uh.
Much more exciting than the bathroom.
And I know it's, you know, it's just.
Better than bathroom.
I know. Um, and then we have a vote to appro, to appoint Cynthia Rainey as the regional representative to the Concord Financial Audit Committee.
So moved.
You have a second? Second, okay. And any discussion?
Thank you, Cynthia.
Thank you, Cynthia. All in favor? And with that, I will adjourn the Concord Carlisle Regional School Committee. Sure. Thank you to our Carlisle members.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone want a break?
Break, so I'm going to ask for us to be muted.
Okay, so I'm gonna go through the same information we presented for the region for CPS except the END, which we don't have in CPS. And I'll start with the general fund. For FY twenty-three year end. So I have a report that you have, which kind of goes through the categories and variances. By DESI function category, and so I'm just gonna run through those. Within district leadership and administration, so just at big picture view, our CPS budget is forty-three million, ten thousand dollars, four hundred eighty-six. And we spent essentially all of the budget, the remaining balance after encumbrances, factoring encumbrances is four hundred and forty-six dollars. And I'll kind of go through some of the significant adjustments to the budget. Some of these have changed since we presented them earlier in the year. As we get to the end of the year, we sometimes find some things have been encumbered that are not spent. So just we'll run through those within the administration category, the one thousand category. We had thirty-six, thirty-eight thousand under budget on legal services. That's always a good thing. Savings on various other lines, including contract services across contract services within the business office, HR, superintendent's office, and I think there's a small contract services within the school committee line as well. So in total, we had eighty-eight thousand in favorable adjustments, a decrease versus the original budget on administration. Within instruction, instructional leadership, there were a few things happening there. We were two hundred and seventy-two thousand under budget on teacher salaries. This is offset partially by increased substitute costs, including long-term subs of ninety-two thousand. So net, that's one hundred and sixty K favorable long-term subs. Even though they're classified there, sometimes they're covering for a regular classroom teacher. We were a hundred and forty thousand under budget on professional development, and the large bulk of that approximately ninety-five, ninety to ninety-five thousand was for special ed. We had budgets that were carried over from kind of COVID. We also had Esser funds available that had to be spent down. We have made adjustments to that budget in FY twenty-four. We'll look at it again. I know our new director of student services will make good use of those funds and has ideas on how to spend it. But in FY twenty-three, we spent very little of the professional development funds for special ed. I will say also that some professional development did happen, got classified as contract services instead of professional development. So some of that's a classification issue. And then with that instructional supplies, we were a hundred and twenty-four thousand under budget. Looking at the categories of instructional supplies, instructional materials, instructional software, primarily due to a ninety-five thousand dollars savings, we ordered math materials, a three-year subscription for math materials K to five, K to five or K to three, K to five, at the end of FY twenty-two, instead of FY twenty-three. So those savings were realized this year, last year FY twenty-three, excuse me. So those are the primary contributors to the favorability and instruction and instructional leadership of four hundred and seventy thousand.
Can I just add to that a little bit that the teacher salaries and the instructional supplies, materials, software, those were very intentional on our part, you know, in terms of hiring and in terms of spending, this was a tight budget. I knew that going in in July of twenty-twenty-two. Bob just had walked in the door and we really, I really held the line on attrition and replacements. So we were stocking up on savings there, and then we slowed our spending down instructionally and only bought what we absolutely needed and used inventory coming off of COVID and that sort of thing. So there was, I don't want that to look like it was anything other than strategic because it was. And you know, people ask us, where does this money come from when we have unexpected things happen like seventy-six thousand in homeless transportation? Because we slowed everything down and we're thoughtful to be sure there was a little contingency somewhere. So that isn't normally how we want to be doing contingencies. We'd rather be budgeting and living to what we budget more thoroughly. So. Thanks, Bob. Sorry.
Within other school services, so this, this line, I should have mentioned too, on the flip side of the report, it lists, and you've probably seen these before, what is in each category. So other school services includes transportation, food service, and nursing. And so what drove the increases to the other school services of a hundred and seventy-three thousand was primarily unbudgeted homeless transportation costs of seventy-six thousand and sixty-four thousand for an unbudgeted one-to-one nurse that was required for a student.
Can I ask a really quick question? Sorry. The like, so but that seventy-six thousand dollars in eighteen, or well, actually no, will come back to us. And so we'll see a revenue number that offsets that in the future.
We're still, we will, in the region, we're waiting for the mechanics of that to be worked out by communicated to us. We were told that that's, they'll work that out and we will receive the money back right now. In prior years, it would have been in general fund revenue to the town of Concord.
Okay.
And that's the issue that Lori's been communicating to the state. That's the challenge we face and.
So that's the money we now believe we're due to receive in November instead of June. But to your point, that goes to. They're gonna be sure the schools get it back. I can't imagine they went through all of that and they're gonna, yeah, send it off to the general fund. So we'll see it.
Yes.
In the future. Okay. Sorry. Just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, and we'll, we'll work through the mechanics once we get guidance from them on that. The other items are fairly small, except for the last one, which is out of district tuitions. And there's, so there's, there's a couple of things going on there. We did have one unbudgeted placement. We also had to use more general funds to, to comply with something called IDA maintenance of effort. When you receive these, you might recall the large numbers we presented on the special ed grants. When you receive those as part of IDA maintenance of effort, you're supposed to spend a certain amount of state and local funds, which is defined as your general fund and circuit breaker. And with some fluctuations, sometimes you need to make shifts in the pools that you use. So we ended up using more circuit breaker this year to meet maintenance of effort. And we don't typically do this, but we have a carryover of IDA. So those can be, they're both gonna be used for tuitions. But I just wanted to point out that we're really only over budget by one thirty-eight. And our circuit breaker carryover would be a couple hundred thousand higher if we didn't have to do this. So the way I would look at it is that, you know, essentially we have another two, you know, when we see the circuit breaker number, just think of it as two hundred thousand higher. So again, it was, you know, we had some items that were a challenge to offset and others we identified strategies to kind of help pay for them. The next item I have is FY twenty-four, and like the region, there are no transfers to approve. It's early in the year. We have not had to make any. And the programs with other districts out of district tuitions figure has not yet had circuit breakers. We haven't yet transferred those costs into the circuit breaker fund, nor have we applied offsets from the IDA grant. When we do that, that will absorb all of the deficit there.
The one point three.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna move on to the other funds aside from the general fund. Bear with me a second. The, the special revenue funds, it's a smaller list than at the region. And so I highlighted a few here. Again, school lunch did, was relatively close to break even, started with a beginning balance of two hundred and eleven thousand, ended the year with a two hundred and six thousand dollar balance, had robust participation, increased participation levels versus the prior year. You know, and it was a notable, notable accomplishment. In FY twenty-two, we had to absorb a hundred thousand in food service expenses. Oh, sure. Yes. Sorry.
You got it up.
I apologize to our remote viewers.
There you go.
And so we are, we are in a healthy place. And again, you know, you see a slight decline of six thousand. Last year, we had to absorb a hundred thousand of expenses from this school lunch revolving fund in the general fund. And so we are not doing that anymore. So that's a significant accomplishment for our food service team, combination of cost management and great participation by making good meals. The preschool revolving fund is spent down every year. So that's shown, that's down at the bottom, just showing you what we've taken in. And, you know, just as a point of information, I did just want to highlight that this fund covers about thirteen percent of the preschool program costs. The remaining eighty-seven percent is funded by the general fund. We do, and we're required to provide free services to special education students, which comprise a significant portion of the population in the program. These are integrated classrooms, combination of paying and non-paying students. And so we're bringing in close to a hundred and seventy thousand, or we did in FY twenty-three. The private gifts and grants is again the Concord Ed Fund primarily, and the bulk of that balance will be spent in FY twenty-four through grants that they provided to the school district at the end of FY twenty-three. There are some other things in there, but it's primarily the Concord Ed Fund. And then circuit breaker grew as well. And so I'm gonna talk about this a little bit. The balance grew by seventy-two thousand to five hundred and seventy-one thousand. We're permitted to carry up to one year of revenue into the following fiscal year. And the revenue that we received in FY twenty-three is nine hundred and seventy-nine thousand to sixteen. Again, as a reminder, that's based on FY twenty-two eligible special ed expenses and claims that you receive the revenue in FY twenty-three. So the, that's the maximum carryover, nine hundred and seventy-nine thousand. We're carrying over five hundred and seventy-one thousand, approximately fifty-three percent of the maximum carryover. You remember on the previous section, I talked about utilizing the general fund to meet IDA maintenance of effort. This circuit breaker balance functionally is really two hundred thousand dollars higher. It's just in a different pocket. I'm gonna have these available in IDA grant funds that'll apply to special ed expenses, which we wouldn't normally do, but we need to for compliance reasons. So that's a pretty healthy balance. And we started the year at four hundred and ninety-nine thousand, so five seventy-one again is, is a healthy balance. And I think through kind of management, trying to offering programs in district has certainly helped to keep students in district to minimize out of district costs. Again, you know, you can see the list, there are some smaller funds in there, very small relative to, to the region. And those are for the specific purposes listed. There are some PTG funds. The integrated preschool, preschool fund at the top is really an enrichment fund. That's not the core preschool program. And that's specifically for, yeah. And that's all I have on that. I'm gonna jump to the next section if there's no questions.
Question.
Questions.
Okay.
I was under the impression, right or wrong, that the PTGs were expected to spin off as independent organizations financially and that we were not managing their monies. But what in fact is happening there?
So they are, but this is money they've donated to us that we haven't spent yet.
Okay. So they donate it to us with the presumption that we donate it back to them?
Usually there's a specific project attached.
Okay. Got it. Okay. So we're not administering their funds. We're receiving.
Right.
Is this what I'm, okay. Thank you.
So we had a significant number for electricity at the region, but with a much bigger, no number like that. Yes. It doesn't kind of make sense to me.
Yeah. We'll look at that. You know, I did notice that too. So I didn't list it as a variance why that is.
Okay.
Can look into that more. We have a company that helps us analyze our
Sure.
utility trends. We can see if they have a good answer for that. It could, some of it could be budgeting, like just with budgeted more conservatively at CPS.
And do you think there's gonna be a, did the, the rates go down? Am I remembering that correctly?
Yes.
Okay. So we're not gonna see like a similar head and we don't think.
No, on the CMLP site, there's two pieces, the core commercial rates gone down. I don't remember the exact number, but on top of that, the demand charges, which are pretty significant for large commercial customers, which our schools are. The demand charges went down a healthy amount, like I think it was more than twenty percent. So that's relative to FY twenty-three. So.
And then the athletic fund at the CPS. Don't we charge at the middle school? Just why didn't we get any revenues there?
We do. Some of that we are looking at, we believe we have some revenues through my school bucks that haven't been applied yet to it. So we need to transfer out of the kind of our my school bucks account and apply it to the athletics account. So that's something that will need to occur. We also have funds there that we can spend down. We have spent some money on the expense side that we've paid for out of the budget that we could, we could pay for out of the revolving fund. So we're gonna look at needs that occur in FY twenty-four. If we get requests for athletics and utilize these funds before we use the general fund.
Yeah, they're not significant compared to the region, but the transportation and, you know, it's not that many games and it's, it's not a lot compared to the region. I get that. But on the other hand, it'd be nice to offload some more of our expenses to that to the revolving fund if kids are paying money.
Should we have a school bucks line here of money that's?
It's the mechanism they pay their fee.
No, I understand that, but if it's nowhere else, it should appear somewhere.
It will get transferred into our cash and get deposited to a, to a account. But I, that's something I will definitely look into and make sure that if it's, it's getting done on a timely basis, so it's reflected here. You know, we have an example, like, you know, for example, the uniforms of one of the teams were kind of in not great shape and ratty condition. So we have a new athletic director that has a request for one of the teams to get new uniforms this year. So.
I mean, that's what, that's what it's there for. But I would, I'd like to see the, like, I don't know how many kids participate, but it's fifty dollars per kid for, with a cap, you know, but.
I will track that down.
Yeah.
Okay. Onto the the multi-year grants. And I have, I have, you know, the detailed view that we looked at for the region as well of all the annual grants. But for the multi-year grants, we have Esser two, Esser three, ARPA IDA and ARPA IDA early childhood. ARPA is the American Rescue Plan Act. Esser two has been fully spent down at the end of FY twenty-three, as you can see. Let me scroll down here. So the remaining, just under fifty thousand was spent down this past fiscal year in FY twenty-three. A good chunk of the Esser three funds were spent down. We do have a remaining balance of five hundred and thirty-three thousand, five hundred and thirty-three thousand. And we are paying for two positions as well as some summer salaries for the summer school out of that. That will be substantially spent down. There might be a small balance that, you know, it would be nice if we can, it's not guaranteed. But if we can use some of it for summer school next summer, we will. But this, this grant expires September thirty, two thousand and twenty-four, so three months into FY twenty-five. So that's probably the only thing that we, if we were to carry over funds, we would try to carry it over for is the summer school. ARPA ID has been, IDA has been spent down in full. And ARPA IDA for early childhood, specifically for three to five-year-old students, has a small balance that is spent down this summer. For the entitlement grants, again, we have similar grants as we do at the region. The amounts are different, as you can see. Our Title One funding is a lot healthier, an amount of two hundred and nineteen thousand. I'm gonna see if I can call this up for external viewers. Okay, share screen. Okay, so it's on the screen for our external viewers now. The first grant Title One. You can see the funding is significantly larger for CPS, two hundred and nineteen thousand. Again, we use this for fund tutors. Alcott is our Title One school. Is this specifically targeted to Alcott? And not for the other schools? That's where those funds are used based on the the targeting that's provided to us by state and federal government and following their guidance based on proportionality of low income. Title two, we use professional development for teachers again, which is the core purpose of this fund. And Title four, we receive can be used for Title One title and two purposes. It has some other uses. We use it primarily to support and pay for instructional support staff here, and that's ten thousand. We have, the IDA grant was, again, we use it here for simplicity specifically and apply it to out of district tuitions. Our funding in FY twenty-three was five hundred and forty-two thousand. There's a component, a kind of a companion component to that for early childhood. That's an additional fifteen thousand, five oh six. We use that for support staff and tutors. The Metco grant at CPS, based on the number of students relative to the high school is proportionally larger, six hundred and ninety-one thousand. It's used for staffing, administration, academic support, transportation. We talked about the teacher diversification grant. We received the same amount in both districts. And we received a Stars grant. This is for an artist in residence. I can't remember if it's a poetry teacher, a poet, it's read poetry, but is it?
At Willard School.
Yeah. So they received from.
Steven Rotina.
Yeah.
Yeah, Chinese poetry.
So the district received funding for that through, I think, the Massachusetts Cultural Arts Council, Cultural Arts Council. They have a specific grant for this. It might be the last year of the grant.
It is the last.
Yeah. But it was a nice opportunity for the students. And we received sixty-one hundred, which essentially supported that artist in residence. And so those are the grants that we received in FY twenty-three for CPS. I also sent separately via email, we sent a list of the homeless grants and how they're, they're being used in FY twenty-four. And so, you know, at a high level, the bulk of the revenue, we get a hundred and four dollars per student day. And we have eighteen students at, actually.
Okay.
But eight, K eighteen, and we have four at the high school. So we have a little bit over three hundred thousand dollars at CPS. It's being used. We hired an additional ELL teacher to support students at Willard. And for instructional assistance, I believe all will be bilingual, including proficiency in Haitian Creole and Spanish. And the, there is a little bit left, but we're also supporting a family and home coordinator who's working with families at the, at the shelter. And we have a small balance left to support needs that we haven't yet identified. And we'll see what arises. I know Dr. Hunter met with other districts and they've identified some, some programs and services that they provided. So we might borrow some good ideas. I think those are all the items I had. Like I'm forgetting something, but if there's no questions, I'll pause there.
Like most of us as we went, but anyone else? Thank you, Bob. I echo Tracy's sentiments.
Very thorough. Thank you.
Really helpful. This is very helpful.
To our knowledge, is the population at the Best Western likely to stabilize for the school year at this point?
Overall, it's quite stable. It, one room here and there turns over, but it's very minimal. I will just, and I know this isn't on the, I was with forty other superintendents this afternoon and many of them with unsupported shelters. So there's no mock. And I can't just say enough about the game-changing difference to have the service provider on site than what's happening in the other communities. Yeah. So we were with Secretary Tutwiler. So they were all saying, what would we, you know, how this could be better? What could we do differently? And I raised my hand. I said, I know what you can do differently. It's like, what's happened for us has been really quite well supported. So. Yeah. All right. All right. Well, Bob, I know we don't have any report, I mean, transfers in our Q one FY twenty-four quarterly report, but do we want to yank it up anyway?
Uh, yeah. Do you want to say vote to accept the report as is with transfers?
Yeah. First quarter. Yeah.
Yeah.
So moved. If we're ready for action.
We weren't there yet.
Oh, I'm in the wrong section. Okay, sorry.
So do we want to pull it up and share your screen, even though there's not much to make of it?
Which one?
He did do, he did look at, he did talk about it. Okay, okay.
Yeah, I didn't go through C.
Didn't do the thorough ERU, which we could do with the, let's go. We can talk about it. Yeah. Do you want to shift to the thorough project? It's a theme when we do capital that bids way over budget.
So I have my memo on screen. I'm not gonna read through it. I'm gonna share that we are just high-low. Our bid came in at eight hundred and ninety-eight thousand, six hundred. The next lowest bid, there was only two bidders, which was very disappointing. We had a large number of people show up for the walkthrough, sub bidders and bidders. And I'm not sure whether our cost estimate scared some away. Or they're just busy, but we had only two main bids. And again, one was a hundred and fifty thousand lower than the other. We have a pot, we, we had, we're familiar with Ambient Temperature Court. Our facilities manager worked with them at Alcott on a significant project. And they did a very good job there was the feedback. And I've worked with them in other district. They did a good job on an HVAC project there as well. So we are comfortable with the company. The, the budget that we had allocated for this was seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand. Initially, it was, I believe, six fifty or six sixty-five. We increased it somewhat in our, in our planning as we went into FY twenty-four. Because time, some time had lapsed. And so the, the price escalation was significantly more than we anticipated. And we certainly anticipated some. So we're short a hundred and sixty-nine thousand, three sixty-six. We do have funds that have been allocated to Ripley projects that we've had some savings on. And some of it's through a lower scope. So some of the savings are from the Ripley flooring. We had a state contract bidder that did the work at a significant savings to us for the carpeting in this building. And the parking work outside in the parking lot and in the walkway, we've saved some money on those projects as well. And so what I would recommend is that we pull some of the savings from those projects and apply it to this project. My sense from talking to the, the company that helped us do the bid, BLW, design engineer for, was that this is not an anomaly, you know, kind of similar to when we talked about the CMS middle school project, similar to what we saw with the CACH access road. You know, we, where we have escalation, if we were to not accept this and go back out to bid, we could be in the same place or worse. And if we didn't get, you know, this is also, we're at a time when we either do this now, approve it and move forward. So we have time to then have them plan and execute for the summer. Otherwise, we're waiting a whole nother year. Approve it and move forward, so we have time to then have them plan and execute for the summer. Otherwise, we're waiting a whole nother year. This is not work we want to have done during the school year.
Yeah.
So. So my recommendation is that we move forward and accept this. School committee policy for a public bid is that you should vote to accept it. That it's not something that we would just accept. Now, I've noted an alternative there that we could pull from other places, but I don't think we should be pulling contingency funds from the middle school. I recommend that we. Pull from Ripley.
It's like we might doom ourselves. Yeah.
So I'm asking.
Way to go on that.
Yes. So I have a question. So I understand that we accept the bid. Is there a necessary? That then that we will vote on that? Is there any necessary? Subsequent votes to. Adopt your recommendation? Of the, of where we're finding the balance of the funding, or is it?
It's, it's not necessary. You've previously approved capital and we have flexibility, but the way it's voted is to reallocate between projects.
Okay.
These are all projects that have been approved and some are more expensive, some are less expensive. So I, you know, my understanding is you do not need to.
Right.
To do so.
Okay. That's.
The Ripley projects, was any of the work rolled back or reduced, or were these simply unanticipated savings?
Some of it's saving, some of it is a little bit of a rollback. So the sidewalk work. Got really expensive when we got into the space near the preschool. So we said, we're not, that's, that's. You know, the pricing was very different for the space that's outdoors versus in that interior. So that's something we might look at doing over time. So that's one scaling back that did, did occur.
Thank you.
I have one other update too, related to capital. It's also Thoreau. So the nineteen ninety four wing that. Had the fire three years ago and then last year had the pipe freeze. We have a capital article for. Funds there that would have to have a design developed and. It's, it's not going to be, you have to go through a design and then, you know, go through a bid process. That wouldn't be ready for this winter. It would be. Yeah, I don't think it would be ready for this winter, even if we had a company ready, ready to do this design. Norrell is our typical partner when it comes to fire suppression. They are unavailable. We're going to have to look at other companies for a design and. See if we can find other companies in the industry that will do this work. In the meantime, we said, well, let's not. We need to do something this winter. We worked with our facilities manager, Russ Hughes, worked with Maya and our system business manager to develop a. An alternative that would have temperature sensors up in the attic space that are connected to the building management system. So they would send alerts if we hit certain temperature thresholds, either too hot or too cold. And the total work is about fourteen thousand. We're going to get ten thousand funded by Maya. We, this is a town of Concord grant. We're kind of part of a pool with the town of Concord, so I just wanted to thank. Chris Carmody, who's the risk manager at the town for, for kind of. Authorizing this year's grant for Concord to go towards this project. And we have been awarded it by Maya, so that's where we'll be using these funds. And will provide us some comfort as we go into the next winter.
It's a good investment on Maya's part, that's all I can say. Such major issues, right? Just in the, on the ERUs, which I know you know this, but you know, we're having some significant HVAC problems at Thoreau. So the timeliness of getting things done this summer is really important. And it will improve efficiency for sure. Efficiency, effectiveness, reliability, all of it will improve. We saw that at Alcott after we did the ERUs over there and I'm sure we'll see that here. If this were not to get done for some reason, which I think you're going to approve it, but if it didn't, we're going to spend money on the broken A C. Trying to get it comfortable enough to Band-Aid another year. So you're just going to spend good money after bad. It's definitely time we need to get it done.
Is it an old system? Is that what?
It's the original from the renovation.
Ninety-four.
Twenty years, I think, yeah.
Anyone have any questions, comments? Okay. Thank you again. Alright, so we've seen our grant summary. So now. I would entertain a motion to approve the CPS end of year report and transfers.
I think we're on hold for two weeks.
It's on hold, yeah.
Alright, now we're going to vote to approve the Q one FY twenty four quarterly transfers, of which there are none, so we are just. Accepting Bob's report as written, if I could have a motion for that.
Move to accept the fiscal twenty four first quarter report as submitted, noting there are no transfers at this point in time.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you, Bob.
Okay, Dr. Hunter, could you talk to us about the estate donation to Thoreau and all of its interest and nuance? Yeah, it's interesting. It is interesting. With great gratitude, we were notified. By the estate of Joyce Windall that she had requested two hundred and eight thousand seventy-three dollars to Thoreau. With a specific interest in ensuring West Concord history was taught to the students of Thoreau. So we've done a lot of work with legal counsel on our end and best understood what the parameters of that would be. It's an estate. So we obviously don't want to turn the money down if there's a way to appropriately use it and meet the intent of, of. You know, this really generous donation. So I think we found a way to do that and actually got more excited about it as time has gone on. It looks like we're able to use it for some of the playground improvements and then we're going to put a historic theme to them. And really use it as a learning play opportunity. And so we're super excited about what that brings forward for the students at Thoreau. And, and it meets a need of continuing that expansion of the updated playground. So. Once you accept this, we will work with the estate and start to make transfers and. Make sure we follow all the protocols we need to, but really astonishing and.
It's really generous.
We can thank the family. Unfortunately, we can't do more than that, but we will certainly. Be doing that. And it's, it's interesting. I know a lot of. Historical museums are doing similar initiatives with play spaces and equipment as a means by which to teach history. And I just think it's innovative and. Yeah, it's going to be really fun. Yeah, yeah. Alright, so can I, any discussion, questions?
I, I'd like to just ask for people's thinking on. The, the only concern that accompanies this, and that is. That we create a disparity across the, the three schools. Which is, has come up in previous years, in fact, even in previous decades. When one school wanted to move ahead with a big initiative. It can get complicated and it gets further complicated in the case of an estate, because we certainly don't want to be ungrateful. But I think we also have to, you know, mitigate the, the, the impact. That could be perceived by other schools who. Might say, hey, we're all one district.
Yeah, because I think Thoreau's been behind, if we're going to compare across schools, that the things we're replacing on that lower playground were. Alcott's hand-me-downs. So I think actually we're starting in the direction, and you know, we're doing the campus study now to talk about the grounds in general. So I do think there's some overdue work over there that this will just support because for many reasons. Thoreau just hasn't had the same attention outside that the others have.
And Alcott's hand-me-downs, that dates back to like two thousand five, two thousand six, so it's really.
Yeah.
Old equipment.
Right.
So what I'm hearing is lucky us, that doesn't happen to be an issue because the disparity is going the other way.
Yeah, agreed.
This is just serendipitous that.
Yeah.
Isn't the problem, it could be otherwise.
Correct. If it was going to Willard, I think we'd.
Okay.
Be faced with like, oh. Yeah, but Thoreau needs to.
I'm up at Willard before, I mean, your tenure, but yeah.
I would just like to ask that, because we have the two fiftieth coming up. And maybe we could just. Even though I understand your commitment to having this be a Thoreau, you know, project. Maybe we can just sort of try to put a spin on making this part of the two fiftieth and recognizing the West Concord. Part of Concord's history. And maybe. Pick up on that and make it a learning opportunity for all of our elementary schools. So that maybe could mix in, I'm saying a little bit of curriculum about the two fiftieth. And have Thoreau be the lucky recipient of the physical. Updates or what have you, but I just, if you could just think about that and maybe come back to us and say. And I don't, do we have a big school initiative for the two fiftieth? It's kind of made me start thinking about that.
Well, we've got a lot of requests for collaboration that we're working through, so we aren't not involved. At all.
It's coming, you know, like a train down the tracks, you know, everybody's sort of like, it's so far away. It's just, you know, now it's, it's really coming fast and.
You, you make a good point that Concord history sometimes gets pointed right at Revolutionary Ridge and Battle Road. And what you're suggesting is maybe Thoreau could get all the physical benefits of this, but there could be some, some spin-off. Maybe in the form of, you know, curriculum enhancement.
Right, we have two of our schools in West Concord. So I just, I think it's, would be like a really cool opportunity to really, you know, sort of formalize some kind of. Physical work that we've been doing at Thoreau and, you know, make it, even though it's at Thoreau, make it part of our K five.
Right, so part of the funds, and this I cleared with legal counsel, is, is some sort of stipend or. Ability to pay for some curriculum work to go with the project, so that I think we might be able to utilize across.
That would be really cool, because, you know.
Just in terms of the curriculum, the Massachusetts Social Studies standards has us teaching local history. For second grade, so we focus on Concord, obviously, and we do a lot with the Concord Museum and Walden Pond and.
Of course, point, guess it's all over there. So, you know, maybe it'll give us a chance to really kind of dig in and see.
So our work with the two fiftieth has really focused on our second graders. I mean, you were asking sort of like.
Yeah. And the history of our schools, right? Yeah, some more to come. We'll keep it, that'd be, I think, really exciting.
Again, thank you. For such a generous donation.
She was a teacher.
I was saying, she's an educator in this, wasn't she?
Thirty or forty years.
So I would entertain a motion to approve. The donation from Mrs. Windhall, estate. I believe there is some motion language.
In accordance with N G L chapter forty four, section fifty three A. I move that the Congress School Committee vote to accept the donation from the estate of Joyce Windhall in the amount of two, two hundred and eight. Zero seven three dot and sixty cents, plus any accrued interest.
Thank you. All in favor?
With great thanks.
Yeah.
Let's have the minutes reflect, you know.
Thank you again, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay. Now we move on yet again. So, oh. Now we move on to the ERU bit. So thank you, Bob, for everything thorough with respect to that. I believe there is also. Motion language on the memo that Bob provided, if I could in fact entertain a motion.
So I move that the Congress School Committee vote to accept the bid of Ambient Temperature Corp. And authorize District Administration to contract with the bidder to complete the work outlined in the Thoreau ERU project bid documents.
Second.
Need more discussion?
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. And then our final item of the evening is to accept the donation for some shelving. Laurie, do you want to speak to that, if there's anything interesting?
Yeah, I think it is actually. This is a donation from a family, and I think we'll leave it at that, that got really excited about the new middle school store. That the students are going to be accessing with their P B I S. Points, dollars, coins, whatever we're calling them. And so they've agreed that the offer to purchase the shelving for the store in entirety.
Is this going to be in the existing? Either of the existing buildings, or is this for the future store in the, okay, so they will be transportable.
Yes.
Yes. Alright.
Okay. I move this.
Student engagement on it, for sure. Yes.
Alright Cynthia, you ready?
That the Congress School Committee vote to accept the donation of eight hundred and forty nine dollars and forty five cents for shelving in the new school store at the Concord Middle School.
Second.
Alright, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Again, thank you, more generous Concordians.
Yes.
Yes, we appreciate it so very much. With that, I suppose we can all adjourn and get home to our families. Thank you, everybody.
Same to you.